Welcome to the special meeting for the Board of Commissioners for Grand Traverse County. This is Thursday, November 14th. If you have a cellphone, would you please turn it off or at least silence it? We appreciate that. At this time, if we can have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Lathrop.
Here.
Maxbauer.
Here.
Wheelack.
Yes ma'am.
Thomas.
Yep.
Inman.
Here.
Rennie.
Here.
Lemkool.
Here.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all coming for this special meeting. I know that you all have individual areas that you have a concern, but because we have to have time for us to be able to deliberate what we want to talk about, I am going to limit public comment to 15 minutes totally. So if you find a person within your organization that would speak about whatever it is you want, I would appreciate that. We understand your concerns. We do want to hear from you. We have a lot of emails that I've gotten that have been come through, and also many of the employees of Grand Traverse County has also specified that we are going to make sure that we're going to be, that they're going to be heard. We want to hear from each and every one of you, but it's just not humanly possible. Otherwise, we would be here all night just listening to your comments, and it's more important for us to have our deliberation and to be able to figure out where is it that we want to go. So if you'd read the public comment, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairmen shall control the amount of time each person is allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay. First, I'd like to invite, you know, somebody from each of the organizations that are here to find somebody to represent them and to have somebody come forward and talk about it. Keep it to one minute if you can. I appreciate it. Who would like to go first?
Hello, my name is Ryan Walsh. I live at 436 West Front Street. And I'd like to start out by saying that, yeah, there's a budget problem here and we need to make cuts, and we also have to look for opportunities for economic growth. Now, I remember from the last board meeting that there was something said about there being two liaison officers in the schools. We have a police academy here in town. Why can't we network with them and maybe come up with some kind of internship opportunity to, you know, bring in some of these certifiable officers and let them, you know, work in the schools and get some experience under their belt? You know, it'd provide, you know, an opportunity for them to cover more schools and they could work under a police officer. I'd also like to speak on, I'll just read it off on paper. Instead of eliminating parks and recreation, I would suggest broadening it with cultural services. By doing so, it would open doors for additional funding through grants. One resource could be Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, it would, in which we have a chairperson residing here in Traverse City, Andrew Buckles. There's a need for this here. The art community has flourished in Detroit and Grand Rapids, and northern Michigan is waiting to leave its mark. And I'm speaking from a criminal justice background, you know, with Homeland Security and private investigation certifications.
I have to cut you off.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I think other people want to have a comment too over here.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Good idea, too.
Jerry Pugh, 1143 J Rogers Court.
Amanda Steele, 115 South Spruce Street.
Carol Stocking, 9662 Blackman Road in Kingsley.
Memorandum dated November 8th, 2013 to Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners from Grand Traverse County non-contract employees regarding 2014 proposed Grand Traverse County budget. One of the strategic goals in the recently adopted county strategic plan is, quote, "ensure that Grand Traverse County is viewed as a fair and equitable employer," end of quote. We, as county employees, take great pride in being public servants who work hard for and care about our community and the people we serve. We are highly skilled, educated professionals who intimately understand the operations of our departments and in the services we provide. We, too, are taxpayers and constituents, equally concerned about the financial condition of the county and where our tax dollars are spent. We are dedicated to the county's mission and highly capable of helping find creative solutions to financial problems. We are just as concerned about the county's future as you are and committed to improving our organization and the services we provide to the public. Concern: We acknowledge the need for the significant jump in out-of-pocket health care costs, even though it will place a substantial burden on the shoulders of employees, particularly those who earn a lower wage. Such a change would be compounded by the proposed pay freeze applicable to many of us, while a 1.5 percent pay increase has been proposed for other employees. That is why we, the undersigned employees, believe the proposed 2014 budget divides county employees.
Implications: The pay freeze proposed would be applied in an unfair manner, reducing one's ability to make out-of-pocket health care payments. This would have far-reaching negative effects. Freezing pay equates to lost wages that will never be restored by any future increases. Lost wages would decrease retirement contributions. Employees on the lower end of the wage scale would suffer the most. Additionally, a wage increase for some, but not others, goes beyond the issue of equality. The county has seen a continuous decline in employee morale, best indicated by the high turnover rate of employees. According to the Human Resources Department, the turnover rate is increasing annually. In 2010, 52 county positions were vacant then filled, followed by 59 in 2011 and 78 in 2012. In 2013, to date, 92 positions have been vacated and refilled. At this rate, the number of county positions vacated will have doubled by the end of this year, with no increase in headcount new positions. Such frequent turnover has diminished the quality and the consistency of services provided to our constituents.
We are requesting a fair and equitable wage increase among all employees for 2014 and communications with you about potential solutions to the budget shortfall. We want to collectively and proactively be part of the solution. We believe excellent communication improves relations and are asking to engage with Commissioners and our administration to help resolve the financial challenges facing the county. This would show value and respect for all county employees and improve morale. Consider us, engage us, work with us, use our brain power. All of us together can make the county an even better organization. Over 60 non-contract employees have signed this memorandum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I have somebody from the pool that would like to talk? All those people that are here for the pool, would you raise your hands? Just to let everybody know, okay?
My name is Harriet Wall and my address is 10471 South Wielandal Way.
My name is Kathy Coffin Sheard. I'm at 415 West 7th Street in Traverse City.
My name is Dr. Nancy Rye. I live at 2465 Carroll Road in Traverse City, Michigan.
My name is Judith Briggs. I work, I live at 252 Rivera Road, Traverse City.
You'll have to speak into the microphone or they won't be able to pick it up, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to address the idea that closing the Civic Center Pool will be a wise economic decision. This idea is based on a faulty assumption that the costs of operating the pool are not offset by greater economic benefits. Let's look at some of these benefits that could be lost if the pool closed. One, the pool provides the only public place in our community for children and adults to learn to swim. Swimming is a vital and basic skill for everyone, especially in an area surrounded by water. The tragic drowning problems of the past summer were partially due to a lack of water safety knowledge. Shall we tell our non-swimmers that it's okay if they never learn about safety in the water? What will that cost us? Two, our community is a nationally recognized top place to retire. For many retired people, swimming and water aerobics at the Civic Center are the best and safest way to exercise. Shall we tell our retired citizens that the community does not support their exercise needs? What will that cost us? Three, we have a very large number of team and competitive swimmers of all ages in our area. At present, all of these swimmers practice at the Civic Center Pool. Shall we tell these highly skilled representatives of our community that they will have to go elsewhere? What will that cost us? Four, many special needs groups use the Civic Center Pool, including developmentally disabled children and adults, Special Olympics, multiple sclerosis sufferers, and people with permanent or temporary disabilities. Shall we tell these groups that we no longer support their special needs? What will that cost us? Five, the Coast Guard uses the Civic Center Pool for practice and skill testing. Shall we tell our United States Coast Guard that we no longer support their needs? What will that cost us? Six, the Grand Traverse region has received a lot of very good press as an excellent place to live and do business. Shall we tell businesses that consider relocating here and creating jobs that swimming and parks and recreation are not community priorities? What will that cost us? Let me address one more issue briefly. The idea that the new YMCA pool will substitute for the Civic Center Pool and we will be forced to close since our users will move to the Y. This idea is based on two faulty assumptions. I gotta turn the page. One, that there is a fixed number of customers. However, just the opposite has been shown to be the case. Each time the Civic Center has expanded its programming, memberships have increased. Let me give you two examples that support this.
I think I'm gonna have to cut it off in order to have other people to be able to talk, if I can, please.
May I speak?
Nicely done. If you would like to give that to the clerk, I would be glad to have that entered into it. Somebody else would like to make a comment?
May I make a brief comment?
You may.
I won't keep it too long because I think Harriet said everything I wanted to say practically. I'm a doctor and a CPA, so I understand both sides of this issue. I've lived in this community for 12 years, and over the last three to five years, the swimming program has excelled because we've had great coaching staff, and they have literally pulled people from the walls and rafters that have gotten involved in swimming. Both the older people and younger people, the teams are thriving. And to think, first of all, that the YMCA is a solution is an elitist mentality on anybody's part, because that means somebody has to join the YMCA and be able to afford it, and we have, we have groups coming from Elk Rapids. We have people who just barely come in and can afford to use the facilities but need to learn how to swim. And quite frankly, the administration of it is horrible. I walk in, I tried to pay my bill the other day, I couldn't pay my six-month membership because there was no one there that could help me, and it was ridiculous. So you gotta start collecting the money that's gotta come to you, but I guarantee you, there's money being missed all over the place because there's no clerical people there.
Thank you.
Okay, one more thing. Swimming, swimming can save your life. I am a swimmer. I have been a swimmer my entire life. I'm a physician, and every year, spring, I go, here we go, here come the drownings, because these kids and young people who have no common sense when it comes to water get out and do things I wouldn't do, having swum since I was five all the way through college. It's because we aren't teaching and giving these kids in our community an understanding for water safety. It's huge. And you know what? As a community, this is a community-building issue, and any money you think you're saving on these pools, you're gonna lose in this community for people who won't come here because of it.
Thank you very much. So, thank you.
So, my name is Kathy Coffin Sheard. I run, I have been hired by Jason Jones to run the master's swimming program, which has been revamped after 25 years. We went from two members on our first day to 75. I have a contact of 120 people in this community, and I just want to say that without Parks and Rec and without our Director of Parks and Rec, we would not have programs, we would not have people working and supporting that. We need to make sure that we are an inclusive community that supports the structure. I'll say just one thing, a couple, just really quickly. Since 2010, in terms of the swimming lessons, 326 people have drowned in the Great Lakes. In 2011, 101 people drowned in the Great Lakes. In 2013, 64 people have drowned in the Great Lakes. Of that 64, 24 in Lake Michigan, the most of any Great Lake. Of the 64 drowning in 2013, 10 have been 18 years old or younger. 54 adults have died this year not knowing basic water safety. So for the above stated reasons, close our community pool, unthinkable. Deny the citizens of Grand Traverse County and its surrounding area the option for a public facility, unthinkable. Take away our Parks and Recreation structure, unthinkable. Respectfully, I ask the Commissioners to rightly, rightfully serve our community, to rightly serve our, our county, to rightfully serve our people, and keep us swimming on both sides of the bay. Don't close our community pool due to proposed competition from a facility as not yet finished. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'll just skip over most of this because I realize you're short on time, but I speak for the water fitness classes. I'm a water fitness instructor at East End Pool and have been for 12 years. I teach three or four times a week with several other instructors to groups, to a group of about 60, mostly men and women. Most classes, we have 30, at least 30 in the water. There are two other exercise groups who also work regularly in the pool. I can't necessarily speak for them, but I think they'll agree what I have to say. I do speak for my classes, and I'm here to tell you, we need this pool. We need a community pool. We need a community pool that can offer us, that, that we can afford and that we need it administered and staffed by professionals who know and understand Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation is a service we offer to the community. It's not something we, we offer to make money or even to pay for itself. We should be offering more for our community, not less. We should be offering more for our employees to, to keep them healthy and stay well. I have a degree in exercise physiology and workplace wellness. I got that degree because after 20 years in nursing, I realized most of my patients were dying because of lifestyle causes. I decided I could help more people by promoting healthy lifestyles, especially exercise. We need exercise in the water. Because most of our classes are seniors, we live in a very desirable retirement community, elderly bodies and joints should not have large amounts of weight-bearing exercise, but they do need exercise to stay healthy and self-supporting. Overweight persons cannot tolerate enough weight-bearing exercise, which they need to lose weight and stay healthy. Water exercise is what they need. It is a growing trend. Our water exercise classes have more than doubled in the last few years. Last summer, just this last summer, we had probably 10 new regulars, some who recently moved to the area, and some that were doing water exercise elsewhere. Water exercise is growing. We need the pool, more pool time, not less. There is, we could fill up more class, classes if there was more time in the pool. There is no after-class time except for 8:00 PM, and that's pretty late for families, working families. It would be wonderful to have, it will be wonderful when we have a new YMCA pool. It'll be a nice family recreation center also, and they may, should provide exercise classes also. But it won't be free, it won't be a community pool, and it won't solve the problem of children growing up in Grand Traverse County not knowing how to swim. We need more pools. It's a rapidly growing area, rapidly growing and beautiful because we have a Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Marcia Smith. I'm Executive Director of Rotary Charities of Traverse City. I reside at 529 Washington Street here in Traverse City. In times of shrinking resources and increasing demands, leaders are called upon to make tough decisions. There is no doubt that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners faces some tough and difficult choices as you make reductions to the county budget. The first instinct may be to cut services and programs that could be viewed as non-essential. Some might think Parks and Recreation fit into this category. We do not support this view, and neither do thousands of county residents who have consistently responded in public opinion polls since 1990 that natural resources, parks, and access to public recreation are vitally important to them. Many of us view Parks and Recreation as an essential component of the public infrastructure, just as essential as streets, water, sewer, police, and fire. Our parks, shorelines, trails, and recreational facilities are one of the primary reasons why people live here, work here, and visit our region. Provision of public infrastructure is the responsibility of government. Over the last 35 years, Rotary Charities has contributed millions of dollars to this county and this region. Much of that has been for the enhancement, improvements, and expansion of natural and recreational areas. But it would be a mistake to think that philanthropy can replace the fundamental functions that are supported by public taxpayer dollars. Government funding for all types of basic, basic infrastructure assures public input and access for all of the county's citizens. In 2012, Rotary Charities and our program, North Sky Nonprofit Network, facilitated an open public process with the Parks and Recreation Commission to create a strategic plan for 2012, 2015. Community needs assessment, providers, surveys, and inventories of existing facilities and programs were all conducted as part of that plan. The second goal of this strategic plan is to strengthen the financial stability of the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight, we would like to suggest you refrain from any immediate action and work with the Parks and Recreation Commission and their staff to further explore creative and traditional ways to reduce cost and increase revenue from both public and private funding sources. Thank you.
Thank you. I have time for one more person to speak, and that's it. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Allison Moore, or I'm sorry, Allison Beers. I live at 10248 Fisher's Run. I've had the pleasure of the last seven years to work with Jason Jones on many capacities, as a fellow founder of the Young Professionals Program, as a planner of events at the different Recs areas, as an active Rotarian, and also through watching him in statewide leadership through Parks and Recreation. He is above and beyond one of the reasons why this community is so connected and why the young people are so connected to this community. He is by far one of the finest collaborators and connectors I've ever encountered, and I feel blessed to have him and he is an asset to this town. I would hate to see him leave and go elsewhere, outside of the county and outside of the state. In a recent Young Professionals poll that was just finished, there was an overwhelming response that access to recreation is absolutely crucial. Also, I've also been sent as a board member of the DTCA, and they also feel that having a pool in their county is very important. In closing, I just want to make sure that Jason keeps his job in town and that we are so, so lucky to have him. Thank you.
I have to cut it off because in order for us to be able to continue, I just want to express my appreciation for how eloquent most of the people here, all the people, have stated their viewpoints, and I think they represent the majority of the people that are here tonight, and I really appreciate it, and I'm sure each of us Commissioners do also. So I just have to cut it off because otherwise, we're gonna be here until midnight, and it's really important that we hear from the department heads and so we can continue this program if we can, and I really appreciate everybody being here. Okay? Thank you. Next on the agenda is going to be Warren Kramer. Warren, if you'd come forward. Warren is going to talk about bonding for retiree healthcare. So, if you would please introduce yourself, Warren.
My name is Warren Kramer. I'm with, thank you, thank you.
Be sure to speak into the microphone or else it won't be picked up.
Okay, good evening. My name is Warren Kramer. I'm with Robert W. Baird. I work in the firm's Municipal Finance Department, and I was asked to come here this evening to comment on the possibility of bonding for the county's unfunded pension liabilities, address the potential benefits and costs, and also address the impact of changes in the anticipated rate of return in the underlying actuarial assumptions. I had a lot prepared for this evening. This is gonna be kind of a difficult process to kind of run through quickly. I will do my best. I didn't expect to see your meeting so well-attended this evening, and I'm sure there's a lot of other people that want to speak and probably hear more from you about other issues other than the bonding implications for unfunded pension liabilities. Having said that, when I was in college, accountants used to say, "Why did God create finance majors?" And they said, "Well, that was so accounting majors had someone to make fun of." And then, you know, going up the chain, "Why did God make actuaries?" And that was so they could make fun of the accountants. And what I know about actuaries is that these people are incredibly bright and talented, and the idea of trying to consolidate the whole discussion of pension bonding and pension and the implications of rate changes is gonna be kind of tough to do. So I've included in the information that I provided you my card, so I'm happy to spend any time beyond this to answer any questions that you may have, you know, at the end of the evening. As you're all aware, the government came up, or the governor, my apologies, came up with this EVIT program, this Economic Vitality Incentive Program. And one of the components of that program was to encourage municipalities to convert from defined benefit pension plans to defined contribution benefit plans. And in theory, that's very good on many levels, but there is a kind of a downward or offsetting reality associated to converting defined benefit plans to defined contribution plans. What happens, and if I could turn you to the first page, you have a, a graph where you have one line going up and then coming down, and then you have another straight line underneath. The top line is what happens to your costs associated with a defined benefit plan that is closed. The actuaries accelerate the amortization of the unfunded liability, so it forces your payments up.
Warren, why do they do that?
Because they can.
I'm not an actuary, and I find, I find, I find it rather arbitrary.
I do, too. That's why I asked.
And, and so I don't have a good answer for you. I think if you had an actuary at your disposal, I'm sure they could give you a better, a better answer than I can, but it is something that I think the overall goal is to ensure the viability of the assets in the closed plan to ensure that those retirees still receiving the defined benefits will continue to... receiving the defined benefits will continue to realize those defined benefits. And I did have an opportunity to meet with Dave, been to the county administrator. He was extremely helpful in our review of this information. And, you know, the goal of the proposed bonding is to essentially prevent a municipality from having to essentially gut essential services during the period over which the unfunded liability is amortized. So if you look at this, at this graph, that, monetizing that that top red line is over the straight red line, that's the cash flow relief that you're looking for. The line that's straight across is the proposed bonding, and it approximates what you would be paying for the bonds in lieu of the unfunded liability. Let me, let me back up. I think in my attempt to accelerate my speech, I'm missing some of the essential points. Again, when the plan is closed, the payments are accelerated, causing significant cash flow demands on already limited resources. The legislation that was passed that authorizes the issuance of bonds to pay off the unfunded liabilities is meant to be a tool to basically smooth out the payments and avoid those cash flow demands in the early term, recognizing that those costs over time are going to drop, you know, significantly. So the initial goal of the legislation was to give you an opportunity to pay off those unfunded liabilities and fix your payments at or near your current levels for your unfunded payment requirements, but you just happen to fix those payments for a longer period of time.
Warren?
Yes?
I'm going to interrupt you periodically with questions, and I'm sorry to do that, but the law sunsets at the end of next year.
That is correct.
Why? Do you have any idea?
I do not know. Maybe it was designed to have a kind of a test or a trial period before it was extended. Matter of fact, it's not only limited on just time, not only does the law sunset, but it's only permitted for municipalities that have a double A rating or better. So I think it's more of a test. I think if Treasury can wrap its arms around the whole process and see that it is beneficial, I would guess that there would be a, an extension, you know, of this legislative authorization. So when I met with Dave again, that was the county's goal, from what I understand, in simply looking at this, you know, to provide some cash flow relief, some help in, you know, reaching the current budget needs, and simply shifting, you know, those payments that are currently above, that are above current levels, kind of out to the end. And that's how the process kind of works, you know, in general. And in terms of providing cash flow relief, I have come to the conclusion that it indeed does provide cash flow relief, but it's important to remember that it does come, you know, at a cost. So right now, the information on the next page is some information that was provided by the county's actuaries, and it shows what the county's unfunded pension liability is for its converted defined benefit plans, and then it shows what it will take to amortize that liability over the next 20 years. And the first page was really kind of to talk about, you know, why in theory, you know, this could provide cash flow relief, but it happens to be based on the county's numbers. And when I met with Dave, in a perfect world, the goal would be to keep the county's current unfunded liability payments at 2014 levels. And if you go to the next page, this is kind of a little not-ready-for-prime-time cash flow that I've kind of put together to assess what kind of, or quantify, the cash flow relief, you know, that the county is really looking for. The first column is that amortization schedule for the market value of the unfunded liability, and that was what was provided by the actuary. And when you look at the graph, that's the, that's the column, not the column, but the line that kind of goes up and then drops after 2026. So in talking to Dave, we determined that the desired payment was keeping everything at or below current 2014 levels. So I have kind of a column called "My Desired Payment," less, if you take your required payments, less the desired payments, we have the desired cash flow relief. The total relief that you're looking for over the next, next 14 years is totals about $11 million. And, you know, early on, you know, I wasn't a huge proponent of this proposal because when you take a look at the unfunded liability and the associated interest cost relating to the bonds, it seemed like a whole lot of money to pay, you know, for, you know, relatively little cash flow relief. And I, you know, the example that I had pointed to often was the city of Northville. And the city of Northville was actually the sponsor of the legislation that authorized bonding and for unfunded pension liabilities. They happened to be a client, and they asked me, "Well, what do you think of it?" And I said, "You know, guys, we're paying a lot of interest to get a little cash flow relief. In fact, we determined that, you know, over the remaining life of their unfunded liability, they would pay perhaps nine and a half, or, I'm sorry, nine and a half million dollars of bonds, and that would result in about $5 million of interest, but their actual cash flow needs over their current funding levels only range, depending on what valuation you looked at, from about $750,000 to a million and a half." So I just said, "That's a whole lot of interest to pay for a short-term cash flow relief." And I said, "You know, you guys have a tremendous amount of cash on hand. You're currently not earning any money on that cash on hand. Why don't you borrow the funds internally?" And they realized, you know, that they could do that without impacting or adversely impacting, you know, their operational liquidity. In talking to Dave, I had some immediate ideas as to where I thought some dollars could come from. Unfortunately, I did, and usually when people are looking for money, they go immediately to the delinquent tax payment fund. I went to the delinquent tax payment fund, and basically, you're transferring out, at least over the last five years, I think you've already tapped that asset. You're transferring out about as much as you make on the delinquent tax fund, you know, in each year. Yes, there are assets remaining, you know, but it is a decision of management and the commission whether or not they want to use those dollars. And before I would use any of those dollars, you know, I would be very careful about the potential impact, you know, that that could have on your rating, and again, operational liquidity. Cash is king when it comes to financial flexibility, and, you know, there are always unforeseen, you know, budgetary challenges. So in the case of Northville, it made sense, you know, to fund it internally, to the extent you had resources, you know, that are consistent and not frequently tapped, and, you know, you could make that assessment, and to the extent you can, you know, all the better. But I realized that not all municipalities are the same, and not all, you know, each pension analysis is very different. Your workforces are all very, very different. You have different labor plans. You have, the age of your labor force and your retirees are very, very different. So, you know, you just can't say one, one, you know, idea would work, you know, for everybody. And absent, you know, the resources to provide that cash flow relief, I've come to the conclusion that bonding will provide, or is a tool, that can be used to provide cash flow relief. And what we then did was say, because that's kind of where our analysis stopped for the city of Northville. In the case of the county, we don't have, let's just say, the excess resources, you know, that Northville and other communities, you know, may have. So we say, "Okay, what is the risk to the county if in fact it did bond and the assumed actuarial returns on the actuarial assets change? How would that impact you?" And then it was, you know, it was obvious that that risk is there no matter what, because as you know, every single year, you get a brand-new actuarial study, largely because maybe changes in labor agreements, retirees don't die as fast or die faster, you know, than the actuaries assumed. So you're, you have kind of a moving target that moves each year. And whether you bond or not, if you don't realize the embedded return, and the actuaries have assumed that over time, you're going to consistently earn 8% on your actuarial, on your actuarial assets, and you're going to also earn on the monies that are contributing, that are paid in each year, a portion of that goes to current service costs, but in this instance, it's all going to prior service costs or the unfunded liability, some of which will be paid for actual expenses and others will be invested. And they continue to assume in reaching these numbers that you're going to earn 8%, you know, and they defend that return vehemently. Now, this year, the stock market has done extraordinarily well and certainly has exceeded the 8%. If we close the year, you know, and hold the returns that we've made to date, next year, your unfunded liability, all other things being equal, is going to be lower because you've made more, likely made more than the 8%. I think given the last six, seven years, you would ask the question, "Well, how'd we do in those years?" Well, we certainly didn't do 8%. And, you know, we probably lost a whole lot of money during that time, and that's what's put pressure on the actuarial payments or the amount of the unfunded liability, because if you don't earn what they say you're going to earn, and they recalculate that liability next year, it's going to go up. And so what we tried to do in the scenario that, that I showed you, this is based on the actuarial assumption that you continue to earn 8% on your unfunded liabilities. And in today's market, if you did decide to bond, we believe that you have the opportunity to borrow at a cost, and this example was 4.88%. And while the unfunded liability on a Pago basis is 39 million, the state's going to require you to bond for the actuarial liability based on the market value of the underlying assets. So in this instance, you'd have to bond for $43 million, which is $5 million more than what you are required to pay on a pay-as-you-go, on a pay-as-you-go basis. So we said, "All right, if we could borrow at 4.88%, and we're going to borrow the full $44,935, what is our annual debt service requirement going to be?" Well, the next column past desired relief is the estimated debt service requirement. Your annual debt service requirements are going to be about $3,467,000 annually over the next 20 years. Now, your desired payment, which is pretty close to your desired payment, which was current levels, of $3,452,000. So in terms of bonding and where you want your desired payments to be, you're within spitting distance. You're about, and I call it budget change. If you wanted to absolutely keep your costs, you know, at 2014 levels, and you can bond at this, you know, at this level, you'd have to make some budget changes totaling about $15,000 a year, and over the life of the deal, a total of about 320. That would keep you at a point of your current payment levels. But at the end of the day, what is it really costing you? Okay, you issued $45 million in bonds, or $44,935 in bonds, and if you did nothing, you would pay the amounts that are currently anticipated or projected under the Pago actual amortization. Over the life of the tran, over the life of the liability, it's going to cost you about $690,000 more than it would cost you to simply pay the annual requirements had you done nothing. Now again, that assumes that there's no change in the actuarial return. They actually receive or earn 8%, and, you know, it matches their assumptions. So over the life of the deal, you can get, you can keep your payments at current levels, and it'll cost you about $700,000 over the next 21 years. So it will provide you relief, but that again is in a perfect world that you continue to receive 8%. But as I said earlier, if you didn't, even if you didn't bond, that amount or that scheduled payment is always going to change, because some years, you're going to earn more than 8%, God willing. Some years, you're going to earn less than, you know, 8%. To the extent you realize more, great. To the extent you realize less, you'd be, you're going to pay more. So if you issued bonds and you didn't, and it was assumed that you made 8%, and you didn't make 8%, well, you're going to be back into an unfunded situation again. And the amount of that unfunded situation is going to depend on the difference between what you earned, actually earned, and what you anticipated that you would earn, or what you assumed that you would earn on your unfunded liability. But as I said, it comes at a cost, and you say, "Oh, wait a second. How does, how can I pay off $40 million, or 40, yeah, $44 million, $45 million of liabilities and have it cost just $700,000 more than what I'm currently paying now? And if I didn't bond, you know, why is it so close?" Well, what happens when you bond, you're going to take your bond proceeds, and you're going to give it to your plan administrator, and then they're going to earn, or assume to earn, when they calculate your unfunded liability, that same 8%. So should you realize this, it's a, it's a, it's a positive arbitrage play. You're borrowing at 4.88%, the funds are being invested at 8%, and you're getting the cash flow relief that you need, you know, for about $700,000 over the life. So that's what, $35,000 a year, which, you know, at first glance seems to be, you know, a very reasonable cost for the, you know, for the desired cash flow relief. In all fairness, you have to look at, "All right, what are the associated costs?" And what we've identified is really what the opportunity cost is, because when you issue bonds... Because when you issue bonds, you're extending essentially the amortization period of that debt. And if you looked at that first graph again, the red graph, you see your payment requirements go up and then drop down. So if you fixed your debt service at that bottom red line, there's a point where your bond payments exceed your pay-as-you-go amortization payments. And the opportunity cost is, once you bond, you're not going to get the benefit of that subsequent drop, uh, in the funding requirements. So there is a cost. And to the extent that you don't realize the positive arbitrage, there would be a, an additional cost. So what we did is that we ran basically the same scenario under the assumptions that your actuarial return drops from eight to seven to six to five and four percent. So what happens to you in those instances? Well, um, the, Roy G. Bibb, I mean, um, the, the next page is kind of a summary of, of what happens, you know, to, um, your actuarial amortization and your bonding cost. If, for every, there's a rule of thumb that's pretty true. For every one percent change in your earnings on your actuarial assets, there will be a corresponding 10 percent change in your unfunded liability. So if your earnings went to nine percent, your unfunded liability is going to go down by 10 percent. So if you earned nine percent this year on your assets, your unfunded liability is going to go down by 10 percent, or about $4 million. Conversely, if you don't realize that eight percent return assumption, your unfunded liability is going to go up. And I think we don't care if your return exceeds eight percent. I think the concern is, what happens if it's less than eight percent? So we wanted to show you that, and very simply, um, what, what you could walk away with is that, um, you will still get cash flow relief if you bond, but it will diminish at an accelerating rate. So let's just take a look at this pretty, and the reason, you guys, I'm sorry, this would have been a lot nicer had I had time to give this to one of my smarter associates to make look pretty. I actually did this myself.
Warren, I think it should be noted that you have done this voluntarily. And, uh, you know, please, it's, it's, it's a marvelous piece of work.
Well, that's very gracious. I appreciate it. So let's look at the red one again. The red lines, the top one is the actuarial amortization. The red line, or the horizontal red line are your debt service payments. So you're shifting, you're getting the desired cash flow relief on this part. The amount over the bonding, under the amortization payments. That's the, that's the $11 million of cash flow relief that we could get in today's market, assuming no changes in the actuarial return. But if you're, if you assume that you're only going to get seven percent return over the life, your unfunded liability goes up by 10 percent, and your bonding requirements also go up. But if you take a look, and that's what happens with the yellow scenario. But if you look within the red, you can see you've lost this much of cash flow relief. And if you, if it goes up, you still have cash flow relief, because your payments are still under that, you know, first originally anticipated amortization schedule. And you can see with each reduction in your actuarial earnings, or your earnings on your actuarial assets, you still have cash flow, but it goes down. And the reason it goes down is that, one, you're paying, you have a larger bond issue, you're paying more interest, and, um, uh, the amount of arbitrage that was a component actually, or also goes down. So, again, it is a, you know, a tool, and it can provide cash flow relief. But if you're going to do it, you simply just have to keep your eyes open and recognize that that cash flow can, relief can erode over the life of, uh, the unfunded liability, um, if you don't realize, you know, the actuarial return assumption, you know, of, of eight percent.
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, three points. Uh, the one is that, um, when we first looked at this option, uh, it was of the belief or the scenario that, um, that the amortization schedule we currently have with the Michigan Employment Retirement System would stay at 14 percent or somewhere within that range. And, and we would just carry that debt service, um, for the next 14 years. And that was option one at that current payment schedule. We, at that point, did not anticipate that, um, the Michigan Employment Retirement System would take us from 10 to, from 12 to, uh, 10 to eight to five to six as an amortization schedule on that unfunded portion, which they, at this point, I don't think they've told us they're going to do that.
I, I think their default scenario is always an eight percent return.
I, I understand the return part, but I'm talking about the amortization part that we're currently paying with the Michigan Employment Retirement System, um, on the account, on, on the policy regarding the unfunded portion differential.
You mean the time period over which you're, you're required to pay the unfunded liability?
Yes.
Accelerated amortization.
So, so because we're unfunded, they've decided, you know, if you're, you know, x percent, you know, you get 20 years, amortize, and amortize accrual based on, you know, your actuaries or whatever, and that's your payment amount for that year. And, um, that, that's what we would consider in a, in a normal amortization payment for, you know, a retirement, a program. And, uh, so under your particular discussion, uh, if I understand you correctly, you're indicating that if, if, uh, that amortization did not change, uh, with Michigan Employment Retirement System, and, uh, we were able to bond at this 4.8 or whatever it is, that, um, taking it out over the period of time, our cost would be about $700,000 for spreading it, spreading the amortization over, but we would even out our payment?
That's correct.
Uh, now, the, the, I guess the question I have for you is that, um, um, if, if that is true, to me, um, seven hu- the, the differential, six, $700,000 over the next 20 years, is a relatively small amount. And why would we take the risk and go out and bond? Uh, why don't we just stay with the 14 am- amorti-? If we could convince the Michigan Employment Retirement System to continue us on a 14-year amortization, uh, then, uh, we, you know, in essence, uh, we would be gaining, uh, over the next 20 years, we would have that, that additional $700,000, if I understand. Your scenario is, if you have risk with the Michigan Employment Retirement System, and they tell you, you're going to go from 14 to 12 to 10 to eight, and we get crunched cash flow-wise, uh, you know, it will diminish a large portion of our budget, which everyone's going to be really concerned about in this audience. And by bonding, we would offset that risk, potential risk in the future with the Michigan Employment Retirement System, system not knowing what they're going to do at this moment, uh, by bonding out and protecting that amortization. Is that, in essence, what you're trying to tell us?
I, I apologize. I, I didn't, I didn't follow all of that. I'm not really sure where the 14-year.
That's the current amortization we have right now on our, with our current payments on the, with the unfunded portion of, of our.
Commissioner, I apologize for my confusion.
Yes.
I was simply basing our analysis based on the amortization that the actuary provided us.
Okay.
In, in, uh...
See, I'm just trying to compare what MERS has calculated for us versus what you say we could do in terms of bonding.
The one that MERS gave us was a 21-year amortization period. Um, and we, we talked about the acceleration and what it does, and Dave could probably speak to this better than I can, but when you close a plan, um, your amortization for the first 15 years accelerates by two years for every...
Ten straight years and then...
Yeah, and then it drops to one. And then the last five years, this schedule doesn't even really show the last five years. That's just constantly reamortization, I mean, reamortized, um, you know, until the last person in that plan, you know, is gone. And unfortunately, I, I'm, I was a little confused about the 14 years largely because...
I'm just trying to compare what, what our current schedule is versus the bonding.
From what I understand, your current schedule is the second page of the handout, and it is based on the actuarial value of the assets. Is that correct, sir?
Dave, do you want to comment?
Well, there, there are two different valuations. One is based on the actuarial value, which is really about 14 percent below the market value.
That's where the 14 percent, okay.
I think that's where the 14, maybe, I don't know. But, uh, you know, it's, we're on option B, which is the more liberal schedule for paybacks. And it's on, on the first, on this amortization schedule that's been given to you, uh, it shows a 21-year payback, and it, and it shows what MERS has told us. We would have to pay each year, and it goes up by a couple hundred thousand dollars a year until it hits about 5.3 million, then it drops off. That's, that's, it goes like this, and then it goes like that after 10 years. And what the other, what Warren has put together is a straight line. What happens if you have to pay the same amount over the next 20 years? You get to the same place. It's going to cost you some money to do that. Uh, if you actually earn more money on your investments than eight percent, which is what MERS has projected in column one, uh, you know, it's going to be to your favor if you don't bond or if you do bond. It doesn't matter what happens. If it goes up, you do better. If it goes down, you do worse. Uh, the, the, the second page, this schedule right here, if you really think about what these lines are telling you, it says that if you earn eight percent, this is how it works. If you earn seven percent, it's, that 10 percent actuarial, you know, the cost, this schedule is going to go up by 10 percent. And it's going to go up by 10 percent whether you bond or not. And if you're bonding, uh, you've bonded for this, and if, you know, your assumptions are out of whack by one percent, then you're going to pay 10 percent, a 10 percent premium every, you know, for the next year. When they come in with the actuarial, they're going to go, well, you know, we got your money here, but you're going to be a little bit short, so you're going to have to kick a little bit in because your assumptions didn't meet. But if it's over, they're going to say, you don't have to pay. And MERS, just recently, in fact, October 31st, I believe, issued a memo, uh, the actuaries issued a memo to the executive director that said, you're going to have, for these folks that are thinking about doing this bonding, you're going to have a situation at the beginning where you'll probably make more money than you need to, so you won't have to pay any money in. You'll actually subsidize the normal cost, which is the cost of the people who are still getting benefits and still earning benefits. And they said, we, you shouldn't do that. You should actually pay the normal cost. And we have built into the, you know, our projections to pay the normal cost and to continue to pay the normal cost. Because there's two pieces to your, your retirement problem, and one is the legacy cost, and the other one is the people who are accruing benefits today. But it's frozen to new hires, but it, but the people who are still living and haven't retired yet, they're still accruing benefit. So Warren has given us a flat line. There is also a scenario where you can steadily increase that line, increase your payment by three or five percent over a period of time. And what John Axe provided us with a couple months ago was a scenario that basically gave us about a $1 million savings, uh, in the first years, but we had to pay more as we went to, you know, on the debt service for that. So, and I think what Warren is saying is, pretty much, you can do that, you can structure it in a number of different ways. He's just showing us the flat line. Uh, if you want to pay 3.4 million for the next 20 years, this is how you...
And we can adjust the actual debt service to what your Pago tolerance is. But again, we have to base it on something, and we're basing it on something that we all have to recognize is going to change year in, year out, depending on the actual return on your actuarial assets.
Before I go to questions over here, I'd like to have Warren finish his presentation, if you could, please. Or are you finished?
And the last page, you know, is, is simply, you know, a summary. It, it shows of the various scenarios. It shows that, you know, how when your actuarial unfunded liability goes up, your total payments go up, your required bonding goes up, and it shows what your effective cost is. And it also shows down at the bottom how, if your actuarial return is less than eight percent and it goes down over time, bonding still provides benefit, but at a diminishing rate. And, um, you have to remember that, uh, there is the opportunity cost. Had you been able to absorb and finance those additional cash flow needs internally, and you didn't bond, then you would have an extra $11 million, you know, after you, after you go back down below your current payments or your, what I call your bogey, where you want your payments, you know, to be. So it, it's not really just, you know, 700,000. You know, there's the opportunity cost that would have been there had you, I mean, those are dollars that would have been there had you not bonded, uh, but since you bonded, it's no longer there. But when you compare your, again, your total payments to your total bond payments, the cost, you know, is, is roughly the same under the eight percent, you know, scenario. So if you're confident, you know, that you're going to, over the long term, earn eight percent on your actuarial assets, um, you know, I always tell people, if I knew where interest rates were going, you wouldn't see this fat guy here much more. I'd be managing my vast retirement assets on some, well, perhaps my own island. But, um, you know, if you're comfortable that you're going to get an eight percent return, you know, this is a, a, you know, a good idea. And it's basically costing you essentially, you know, $700,000 in actual cash versus what your normal payments would be. Um, but, you know, that's not my call to make.
Well, and it's, it's kind of like taking out a mortgage, isn't it? I mean, it's, it's, if you, if you can afford to pay a 15-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage, uh, yeah, it'd be great if you could do that, if you could afford to do it today. But if you have to, you know, uh, you know, the kids have to go to school naked because of that, then you probably want to go for the 30-year mortgage and keep the clothes on the kids.
And then have the flexibility to the extent that, you know, you don't have those demands, you could take the extra cash and pay down your mortgage.
Right. Let, let me also say, if it, if your assumptions don't hit eight percent, whether you bond for it or you don't bond for it, the effect will be the same.
You still have to come up with the extra cash.
You still have to have the extra cash. If, if, if you, you know, if MERS has given you a schedule that says eight percent, and next year, they go, well...
We only made five.
We only made seven.
Yeah.
You're going to have to pay $20,000 more than you would have had to pay under that schedule.
And they've done that for many years.
And under the bonding scenario, you're going to have your bond payment, and you're going to have to pay 20,000 more to MERS. Either way, you're going to pay 20,000 more to MERS.
I mean, and I've always thought, and we all know what I am, it's just simply a question of price. And, and I love doing, I love doing bond deals. And I think that the right approach to addressing this accelerated amortization, placing these unfair cash flow burdens on the municipalities, is simply change legislatively what MERS can and cannot do. But that perhaps is a, the reality is, you guys are going to pay the requirements. I just, again, going back to your very first question, I think it's rather arbitrary that they accelerate it. But the reality is, is that you're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
And I understand your goal of not wanting to gut essential government services. And I understand your goal of not wanting to gut essential government services, you know, to the tune of $11 million, when in fact, in, you know, 2026, your costs are going to drop, you know, significantly. I'm just not in a, you know, you know, I just see how quickly you can go from a good situation to a bad situation, but that happens whether you, you know, again, bond, you know, or not. So it is a tool, it comes with cost, and it's not without risk. And it really comes down to where, as a group collectively, you believe your return, you know, is going to be. And I think to totally refine it, you know, you could always go back to the actuaries and say, "Hey, you know, give us more precise amortization schedules, you know, based on these return assumptions." I feel very confident they're going to be really close to what we have, what we have here. And it's simply your assessment of where rates are going to be as to the value of the proposed bonding.
One more thing.
Okay, we're just getting down on time here.
Sure.
I just wondered if we want to continue this discussion with him?
I want to ask him.
Or do we want to go to the next phase?
I've got questions.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Go, Dave, go ahead.
How will this affect, if we were to do this and take a bond out for the entire pension liability and pay it to MERS? How would that affect our financial statement and the bond, you know, the rating agencies and how they would look at Grand Travers County?
The rating agencies came out initially and said, "Hey, we're not really thrilled with this idea." Largely because the value of the actuarial assets, the market value of the actuarial assets were so, you know, well below what the actuarial value of the assets were. And they finally came, you know, to the conclusion that, okay, if you bond for the market value-based unfunded liability, you know, we're going to simply view it as swapping or shifting debt. So, you know, it's going to be viewed, you know, with some indifference.
Okay.
So I would not see a rating challenge.
They wouldn't view it more positively, that we're actually addressing the issue?
I really see it as indifference. I don't, you know, because all you're really doing is shifting, really, the payment schedule of the debt. As we showed in that first scenario, your overall payments are roughly the same. Bonding is just about $700,000 higher. So they see it as just shifting the debt.
Okay.
Sonny, you're up first.
I think I got to back up just a little bit. You made comment earlier about what I would call raiding the tax delinquent fund to find the funding.
That may have been a poor choice of words. Maybe perhaps borrow.
You didn't make that terminology. It's my terminology. But the fact is, in Grand Travers County, many, many years ago, the county was committed that each year at the end of tax season, we make all of the taxing entities whole. We make the townships whole, we make the school district whole, and then we wait to receive the money.
That's correct.
That's why our tax liability account goes out and comes back in, unlike other areas where they don't do that. Then the next item would be, we effectively, with the exception of one unit, closed defined benefit retirements in 2001. So that's why we have the closed thing. You need to realize that each year over the last eight years, when the actuarial come in, they didn't make 8%. So guess what? Your payment just got bumped.
That's correct.
That's how we got to $3.4 million this year to make the payment. It wasn't anywhere near that eight years ago.
Understand.
But if I read your information correctly, if we do this bonding, for practical purposes, we fix the structural deficit we have in our budget for the next 13 years. You know, that's the way I read the graph. If we're, if we go to a straight line, for practical purposes, we fix the structural deficit we have in our budget over the next 13 years.
What you do is you fix your payments.
Right.
So you're not paying them in that accelerated fashion.
Exactly.
You're simply paying them...
And then the second piece of that is we gain cash flow.
Me?
We obviously will gain cash flow. Anything that's above this horizontal line is going to be an increase in cash flow that we have available to us.
I don't think it's cash flow. It's really cost avoidance.
You know, we pay, we have to pay this payment to MERS, and we pay it monthly, which means we don't earn a lot of interest on that, or, you know, it's not really invested. It's just used to pay that liability. It goes in and it goes in 1/12 during the year. We sock all that money in all at once. We take a bond issue and sock it in there and make a debt payment. What it will do, and if we structure it in that way, you know, you can save money the first year, a million dollars the first year, and save a whole bunch of money going forward. You replace the debt service, a lower debt service, to pay for the entire liability, and you pay it over a longer period of time. Instead of it going like this and like that, it goes like this. So you, when you say cash flow, when you say, it really is just reducing your annual operating expense by about a million dollars this year, and in probably decreasing amounts, depending on how we structure it, going out several years.
By 2024, we're up, what, $1.9 million a year savings? You know, if this diagram is...
Yeah, I mean, this is one scenario with a flat payment. There's another, you know, John Axe gave us a different scenario that gave us, you know, a million dollar savings the first year.
Right, but that was with the accelerated, that was with the accelerated payment each year.
You just tilt your line.
I don't know. You know, we have to realize how we got here. You know, we were smart enough to close defined benefits in 2001. You know, God, you know, I can't even imagine what this number would be had we not done that. And, you know, the fact is, we fix a significant structural deficit for 13 years with one decision.
Okay, Dan?
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Can we get back, if we do this bond, if things go bad, can we get back into an unfunded situation?
Yes.
And tell me how that happens.
Okay. When you're, when you take your bond proceeds, you're going to turn around and you're going to deposit with your plan administrator. And they're going to take that $44 to $45 million in bond proceeds and use it to fund that unfunded liability. So for that particular point in time, that liability is extinguished, and you are left with just your debt service payments on the bonds.
So that's that $20,000 extra we're talking about?
Right.
Okay, second.
And if you don't pay that $20,000, you start to become unfunded.
Okay, I get that.
You increase, you become, have another...
It's not huge, though.
You're 98% unfunded.
All right.
So if you're, but if your earnings go down and you don't realize, let's just say we're not going to realize 8% this year, that unfunded liability, and we pay it off this year and we don't realize 8%, that unfund, you're going to be back into an unfunded position right away. It's going to be small because...
It's only going to be the margin.
It's only going to be the margin, but yes.
Okay, next.
I mean, it could happen right away.
Next, what's your opinion? This may not be your field, but wouldn't it be better if this board still did, looked at the budget, pared it down as much as we could, so we don't have to borrow so much?
That is certainly an option, and it is certainly your decision.
You have an opinion on it?
Uh...
Does Warren Kramer have an opinion? I just see all these eyes looking at me.
Warren, you don't have to answer every question.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to embarrass you, sir.
You can decline.
No, no, no.
You're doing this for free, and we appreciate it, really. I just try to gain some knowledge.
You know what? My business and my livelihood is based on debt. So I'm a little biased here, guys. You know, I mean, I make money by hopefully issuing debt for you in the most efficient way possible. That's how I get paid. I think anybody would agree to the extent, you know, that you don't have to pay and you could pay cash. You know, you're much better off paying cash. You're much better off, you know, not having to incur, you know, the interest expense. You know, I was talking to a friend about a mortgage. I said, "Well, you paid ours off." "Well, why'd you do that? That's stupid." "Well, I'm not earning what I'm paying on my mortgage, and I'm better off. You know, I'm getting a better return by paying it off." No matter how you look at it, you're always better off by not paying interest. If you don't have that luxury, you know, this is a tool that you could use. I'm not here to assess whether or not you can actually do that or can't do that. I don't have the intimate understandings of the operations of the county to really make that assessment. But if you're going to ask me a blanket question, it really puts me out of business because you're always, you're always better off paying cash if you have it and not having to incur, now, there are other assets. You can, then, there's also the argument, "Well, wait a second. We're going to build a new power plant." And, you know, the benefits of that plant are going to be, oh, let's just say, you know, a new wastewater treatment plant. And that wastewater treat... All right, bad example.
Bad example.
All right, water, all right.
He's a volunteer, folks. Give him some slack.
We're talking about a jail, maybe.
All right, how about, how about?
A jail.
A jail.
How about a water treatment plant?
Okay.
And that's an asset, you know, that is going to be enjoyed by users of that system for 30, 40, 50 years. And then you say, from an equity standpoint, is it fair to charge all of the users of that system the capital cost to build that new plant when it's going to be enjoyed by people 30, 40 years down the road that didn't have to pony up in their rates to pay for that plant? So you can bring in all those equity issues. And, you know, I'm still a believer that, you know, if you have the resources, you know, avoiding debt is a good thing. I don't think we would be talking about this, or this room wouldn't be so full if we had all the resources that we wish we had. So I know that was kind of a...
No, you did good.
[laughing]
All right, Warren, as long as we're going to put you on the spy. If this was your money, this was your financial situation, would you purchase the bond?
Oh, gosh, yes.
Chris?
No, I mean, that's a whole different discussion, though. I mean, it really is. I mean, I...
It is your money, Warren.
Well, yes, I am a resident, and it is my money.
Exactly.
And, but in terms of a personal investment, I like to invest in things that I can understand. And I understand bonds, and I understand municipal credits. You guys, this area is a pretty awesome area. This is a pretty fabulous spot to be in. You know, unlike a lot of municipalities around the state, you guys are managing growth, albeit slower than what it had been for a long time. But, you know, you have resources, flexibility in the future that a lot of other communities simply don't have. So when I evaluate the investment, I look, of course, what is my yield going to be? But what is my risk? I know that my risk investing in a double A county that I think should be rated higher. All right, that was my cheap sales pitch. Um, yes, I would invest in these bonds.
Chris?
And I think what you'd find out is that there would be a tremendous amount of interest locally, you know, to invest in these bonds, largely because it is something that the investor could simply relate to. But they're all very different questions, so...
Okay. Warren, we are in the process of labor negotiations. We have contracts that are up, and those contracts will have an impact on our future pension liability. Would it be wiser, I have several questions. Would it be wiser to do it before or after those labor negotiations were completed?
To the extent that you have, you know, to the extent that these labor negotiations are going to impact your unfunded liability, you know, certainty is always better, and it would make sense to wait. But you're basically saying, "How long do we wait?" Because you're not going to get your next actuarial report until, what, June of 14th?
June, August.
Is it August?
I just want to throw out that the negotiations for this year don't include any groups that are going to be affecting the pension liability.
Okay.
We have taken the OPEB liability out of this.
All right.
We have several, like you said, we are dealing with that in negotiations with a few groups right now.
Okay.
And I think Dave was...
We've taken that completely off the table. That's why some of your numbers don't look as familiar as they look from previous. We took the OPEB liability out of the...
And I think the reason that I, you know, we did that, or I suggested that we do that, I don't know if I suggested, I think we both agreed that given the current state of affairs in the healthcare industry, it's probably a good idea not to do anything until the dust settles and we know what we're really dealing with.
Okay.
Because you're simply dealing, and it's very different than, you know, pensions because you're dealing with a lot more variables that you can't control. So it's far more difficult to assess the value of bonding for OPEB, you know, liabilities. I think in that instance, you're simply adding a fixed cost to a set of variables that you can't control. In this, in this analysis, there is some reasonable degree of comparative degree of certainty, you know, that you can rely on. And I think it's much easier to make a decision, you know, on this. And, you know, the more certainty you have, you know, clearly, you know, the better. But if we do wait, you know, for the outcome, and I am just being, looking at both sides, if you look at both sides of the, if you wait, yes, you'll have more certainty, but you then inject market risk into the decision. What do you collectively think will happen to borrowing rates between now and the next set of meaningful actuarial numbers that you get? We simply, you know, don't know.
Okay, now...
But clarity is always good.
All right. Sonny, I would disagree that doing this fixes our structural deficit. We have, they, MERS has said that, oh, you're earning, you're going to earn 8% year after year, and you know that that has not happened. And that is in part how we got into this mess. And I don't want to go down that road again. Warren, municipality after municipality, and you read about them every day, Governing Magazine, et cetera, et cetera, is in trouble because they have done pension bonds. And, you know, what was it? Around the year 2000, the city of Detroit was 100% funded. And they made all sorts of money in the market in their retirement fund. And what did they do with it? They stopped making payments and, in fact, had so much money, they issued everybody 13th checks. I mean, employees and the municipality itself. And look where they are today. And you take a look at, you know, California, number one pension obligation bond state in the country. They're in deep trouble. Illinois, you know, I read these horror stories after horror stories, and I'm extraordinarily reluctant to go down that path, assuming, gee, we're going to make 8%. We're not going to make 8%. We all know, we're not going to make 8%. We might make it in one year. We might have an extraordinarily good year. I've had a very good year in the market myself. But, you know, I don't anticipate that that's going to go on year after year after year. So how do we avoid going down that path that so many, hundreds of municipalities have gone down? And you and I have talked about this, and you know what ones I'm talking about. So how do we avoid that?
You know, I think that there are some differences, you know, in those examples. in those examples. Um, I don't thi- I think what they had done was rather than, you know, taking those dollars, you know, in, in keeping them, you know, really, in reality, in trust to address the unfunded, oh, uh, pension, you know, liabilities, you know, they were using it, um, you know, and shifting dollars for ongoing operational purposes. And then when they didn't realize the returns that they had anticipated, um, the unfunded liability went up. A- and you would think, um, uh, you know, that there would still be, at least the assets there. The assets weren't there anymore because they had been used for operational purposes. Um, you know, what we showed here in this analysis, again, it's all the assumption that, okay, if your actuarial return goes down, you know, your earnings go down. But those earnings in this situation, I'm hoping, wouldn't be diverted. I think I would be very, very reluctant, you know, to, um, you know, y- your job as a government is to provide, you know, essential, essential government services. I, I don't think you guys were, you know, trained to be portfolio managers.
No, I'm not.
And, and a lot of these communities, um, I think made, um, you know, some mistakes that exacerbated the inherent risks associated with any type of financing, you know, for, you know, pension li- for pension liabilities.
But so we do this, and the market crashes next year.
Um- Then you're back into an unfunded situation. And if the market really crashes and you don't realize anything, you know, then, you know, it's gonna start costing you a lot more, a lot sooner.
Plus interest.
So then you're gonna be left-
And see, that's what I'm seeing in, you know, for instance, Oakland, California. You know, I mean, they would've been better off if they had done nothing.
And so would Detroit.
Yeah.
They hadn't closed their, their defined benefit programs either. They were still incurring additional debt.
Well, they, they didn't close their plan.
Right, they didn't close their plan.
They gave away, when they had a surplus, they gave away thirteenth checks. And they didn't pay the principal on these bonds for five straight years.
Jeez.
And they took out credit default swaps to, to guarantee that they were gonna earn six percent, and then they defaulted on the credit default swap, which put them into bankruptcy like that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, if you wanna mismanage funds, yeah, you can, yeah, it's gonna be a terrible, terrible idea.
Charlie, I'll go with one more question. I think we need to slow down the-
I've talked to Warren about this before, and I heard a whole lot of gobbledygook tonight, I wanna tell you.
I understand.
That is the truth, okay?
It is.
Number, next question. Let's get back to the magic graph.
Yes.
You say you would go for bonding. Let's assume we don't make eight percent.
No, I didn't say, I, I didn't say I would go for bonding.
What did you say?
What I said was that bonding can be a tool to essentially rearrange your debt service.
I think we're all familiar with what you're trying to say there.
Yeah.
Someone asked you a direct question, you said you'd go with a bond. That's what you said. Now, I wanna get back to this thing right here.
No, he meant personal investment.
Whatever.
No, no, I, yeah, I, I wanna be very careful what I said. Um, would I, I think Sonny asked me, would I invest in them? Would I buy them personally?
He'd buy the bond personally.
He would buy the bond personally.
He believes that we're making-
If you chose to bond-
That's kind of that, that, more, more gobbledygook is, I'm right in certain. Look at this thing right here.
Right.
We don't make eight percent. We owe more money. Does that mean we should bond or not, if we're not assuming we're gonna make eight percent? Because we're gonna have more shortfall as we go forward until the hump decreases.
That is correct.
Okay, so tell me what we would do, what you would do, assuming we're not going to make eight percent. Because every, no one here thinks we're gonna make eight percent, is what I'd get out of it.
Then I would-
I don't necessarily agree with that.
Well, what do you agree with?
If you, if you have forty-five million dollars, and you, in one piece, and you have the opportunity to invest it long-term, you don't have to pull it out, you're gonna get eight percent during the course of those bonds.
So why we have this, why we have these unfunded liabilities going on? We haven't made eight percent. You said that yourself.
We haven't over the last several years.
So, you're optimistic we're gonna make it from here forward?
Okay, let's limit this to questions at this point, instead of statements. If we can, is there any more questions?
I suppose we could argue later.
Yes. That, yeah, I think it's important that, if we get into that discussion, then we could get into that discussion, if that's all right.
If, if there's anything that I would like to get across, it can be a tool to rearrange the payments of your liabilities. It is not without risk or cost. And as your rate of return on your actuarial assets, uh, goes down, your unfunded liability and the potential cash flow relief from bonding will go down. And it goes down at an accelerated rate. So there is a point at which you're not gonna earn anything, you're not gonna get any cash flow relief, and then you're in pa- in a situation where you're paying higher, you have higher unfunded liability payments, and a fixed cost associated with debt service. Um, that would be under a rather dire, you know, you know, expectation of, of market results. And Commissioner, that's why I tried to show you what happens with those changes, you know, over time. And again, the benefit and the, I mean, the, the, the benefits of bonding go down at an accelerated rate over time if your rate of return goes down. So if you-
Can I, can I interrupt just for a second? If you bond for, for this liability, you're gonna pay the bond payment every year, and then if your expectations are not met, if the eight percent has not hit, it hits seven percent, you're gonna pay additional dollars to MERS.
Understand.
Right? They're gonna tell you, they're gonna report back to you in the next actuarial report. Uh, you're gonna have to, you know, it says in this, in two thousand fifteen, according to the schedule we had last year, you're gonna have to pay X. I don't know what the number is, it's, it's on this page here. Um, it's gonna change. This number, this number two six oh seven, that says two thousand fifteen, if we don't earn, on average, eight percent over a period of time, and they smoothed that it's, there's a lot of things going on with the actuaries. But say it goes down, down to seven percent, this number's gonna go up to two thousand, two, uh, three point seven million, not three point six million. And we're gonna have to pay a hundred thousand dollars more. If we bond for it, the same thing is gonna happen. They're gonna say, oops, you need another hundred thousand dollars if you wanna be fully funded. So we're gonna have to pay a hundred thousand dollars more-
I understand what you're saying.
-whether we bond or not, if the assumptions aren't met. Because eight percent is what MERS is using in the column, they're making us pay. If we don't hit that, we're gonna pay more.
So, as administrator, if we start earning four, five, six percent, would you be more or less in favor of bonding?
Uh, I would be in favor of it, because I'm gonna pay that-
Irregardless?
-additional cost, no matter whether we bond or not.
Okay.
Right now, if we don't bond, we are going to pay this accelerating number. We, we are under the MERS plan, where you're gonna pay more, 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 more. And then ten years from now, you're gonna have surpluses because-
It's gonna come down.
-you've just cut a bunch of services that you could've kept on if you would've stretched that payment out over a twenty-year period.
Um, can we, you know, it's, uh, twenty minutes to nine. I've got five different people that wanna make presentations. If we wanna do more discussion, I'd like to bring this back as more discussion at, at another meeting. Uh, I would prefer that. Um, I really appreciate, Warren, that you come and you make this presentation, and, uh, you know, I'm sure that if we have more questions, we can ask you for them.
I'd be, I'd be happy to come back.
Okay.
When there's a smaller line.
Thank you very much. You did this for nothing.
You want, well, I'd like to do the presentations and then take a recess if I can.
The presentations, and that's the end of the agenda.
So, so we got five different presentations, so we'd like to get those done if I can.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Because I think it's important to get those presentations, because the people in the audience are gonna wanna be part of those presentations.
I have more questions, but I have your phone number. I'll give you a call.
Warren, will you come back? Please, I'd be happy to.
We'll pick on you so bad next time.
Uh, because the majority of the people in the audience, I feel, that are probably from Parks and Recreation, I'm gonna ask Jason Jones to make his presentation first.
Okay, thank you all.
Warren, thank you.
Jason Jones, Grand Taurus County's Parks and Recreation Director. And before I get started with my presentation, I wanna thank all of the community members that are here, whether you're here on behalf of Parks and Recreation, Easling Pool, GIS Department, Equalization, or MSU Extension, or the Sheriff's Department. I wanna thank you all for coming out. And you guys all deserve a round of applause for being here in support of county essential services. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lemkul, I'm curious, would it be acceptable, and I don't mean this in any way, shape, or form as aggressive, to tell the folks in the audience kind of the process for these five presentations tonight? That way, they're informed, and they know when it's appropriate for them to, uh, head out if they feel it necessary.
No, I think we just go ahead with your presentation, and then we can go forward.
All right. Um, as I said, I'm Jason Jones, your county's Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, I've got a variety of things to talk about tonight, but quite honestly, um, I think our county administrators provided a variety of recommendations to this Board of Commissioners. Um, and one of the things that I would suggest is, uh, I'd like to answer any questions that this, uh, commission has. Before I get started with that, though, I think it's important to talk about what our department does. Um, there's something that's not talked a lot about in our community, and it's called community capacity. I'm just gonna read, um, the, 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 uh, general definition of community capacity. It's the ability of a commu- of community members to use the assets of their community, um, to improve the quality of life for those in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the business that we're in. Parks and Recreation shouldn't be the title of it. We're in the community capacity business. I think the folks here, um, represent the assets, um, that we have in order to ensure we're fulfilling our mission of creating community and quality of life within our community. Um, I know, based on your last meeting, a lot of you are looking for quantitative figures about how departments serve our community members. And I wanna throw out just a few of these. I, I'm, I'm gonna keep my statements short. Um, we have three hundred different pool users that use our pool, on average, on a daily basis. This year so far, we've got a month left, we've provided swim lessons to seven hundred and fifty-nine of our county residents. We have two hundred and forty-six visitors per day, per day, during the summer season out on Power Island. We have ten thousand six hundred and seventy-two annual visitors at least at Twin Lakes on an annual basis. And while the information I'm about to share with you is somewhat anecdotal, we have over a million visitors to the Civic Center every year. So, in your meeting on, uh, Monday, last week, Monday, you guys wanted to talk about the number of people that are impacted by the services that you provide to these community members that showed up here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, that's well over a million people that our department serves in ensuring community capacity is built and maintained here in our community. With that, uh, based on the information that Administrator Benda provided to you, I'm interested in any questions you have about that information. Um, I'll open, I'll open the floor up to questions, I guess.
Anybody have any questions? Now, I was hoping that this would be kind of a presentation about what your budget is, and we would ask questions later, but go ahead, Dave.
Jason, um, the budget recommendation, uh, includes the elimination of caretaker positions at Power Island and at Twin Lakes Park. Could you address what impact that might have on the community and on, uh, and on your department?
Well, um, I'll start with Twin Lakes. As I said, we have over ten thousand visitors that we know of that utilize that park on a day, on a, on an annual basis. If we eliminate the caretakers at Twin Lakes Park, it's a hundred and seventy-five acre park that you can't put a fence around. It's a facility that has a variety of assets, including a hundred and forty-person dormitory with a variety of windows. Um, it's got two outdoor fireplaces, a pavilion that seats ninety-plus people, and a caretaker, or caretaker's quarters, as well as Gilbert Lodge. I would imagine if the, um, caretakers were eliminated from that position, the issues that were brought forth earlier this year by Chaz McCall would grow exponentially. We'd see an increased amount of vandalism. Grass wouldn't be mowed, um, reservations, and the folks that utilize our facilities, um, including day camps, uh, the Bayside Travelers Dance Group, their, their facilities, and the opportunities for them to utilize those facilities would be gone. It'd be diminished. Um, we would see an increase in vandalism. We've had three drownings in four years at Twin Lakes Park. If we have less patrol, less involvement of county, or county employees at that park, there's a likelihood that you're gonna see more drownings. You're gonna see more irresponsible behavior happening at that park. Um, eliminating the caretaker out on Power Island, Power Island is, has a long history, um, going back to, going back over a hundred years of being a preser- being a preserve, um, within our community. And I can assure you that losing a caretaker on Power Island would make it less of a preserve and more for a free, more of a free-for-all for those two hundred and forty-six boaters that are boating to the island because the island's there. The care that they would take for that island, I would be concerned about. We have some, uh, um, virgin timber out there. We have campsites. We have portageons, um, in order to serve our public. And, uh, those would not be maintained, cared for. The deer population wouldn't be monitored, would continue to spiral out of control, and eventually the deer would eat themselves into starvation without, with no vegetation on the island. Not exactly the type of scene you wanna see in a preserve.
Larry?
A comment and then a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um, I had the privilege of, uh, attending the central dispatch and emergency management meeting at the Coast Guard Station, um, this morning. And, uh, they were kind enough to host the facility for those meetings. And we do have a great coordination with the Coast Guard on emergency management issues, especially, um, uh, being a, a air station. And also the, the commander for the Coast Guard from Charlevoi that has the boat operation, ship operation also came down. So it was an enlightening, uh, presentation that they gave us at, uh, both those meetings. And, uh, what I gathered from that was, uh, that, um, they were very, um, informative to the extent that, uh, the Civic Center pool, uh, is a tremendous asset, um, in their view, to the community, because they are a part of the community, but as well to the United States Coast Guard. And they depend on that pool for their training, uh, and, um, which I was not aware of. And, uh, so I promised them that, you know, as we go into our budget discussions, that I would, um, reflect, uh, those thoughts to this commission and to the public, that that facility, uh, is considered by the Coast Guard a valuable asset to them. Uh, and when you really look at the responsibility of the United States Coast Guard, and what they provide to our community and to northern, lower Michigan, especially along the lakeshore, um, I would not want to diminish, um, that opportunity for them to continue to have training at the Civic Center.
Dan?
Uh, I met with the Coast Guard guys today, too, and, and, uh, I have to agree with what you said. Uh, however, I'm, I'm concerned, we have such a great problem on our hands to overcome the budget deficit that we have. Uh, so we're looking, we're not, we're not looking just at parks, we're looking at every, we're gonna look at every one of these departments. And all you people here are very concerned about it, I don't blame you. But we have to fix this. We can't let our, our county go like Detroit City. So, uh, uh, Mr. Jones, you did send a missile to us about what changes you might make to save some money. Could you elaborate on that?
Um, I'm not sure what missile you're talking about.
Well, you talked about pool changes, for instance. Uh-
The letter you sent to Mr. Benda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Administrator Benda requested that I send him information, um, related to three items. The reason I sent this information is these, this is the information that my supervisor asked me to send him. He asked me for three scenarios. He asked me about closing Easling Pool in the afternoons during the summer. Talked about closing the pool entirely and eliminating the caretakers at Power Island and Twin Lakes.
All right. So, what, uh, changes in your department do you envision that could help our county out?
Um, well, I'll be honest with you. Um, Dave, I need your leadership here.
Jason, I, I don't know how to answer that. It's, um- It's, you know, you are an advocate for your department, and I can understand that. There have been a number of things stated that are potential ways to cut your department. I know that you don't support any of those. You've been asked to provide me with information about how to do that, and you've given me what information I've requested. I can't answer Dr. Dan's question, because I don't have an answer to it.
Commissioner Lathrop, are you asking me to provide additional scenarios above and beyond what's in this letter?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like you and every other department, this whole group of employees here have said they're willing to join together and come together and work together and teach us and help us, and I expect you to be one of those people.
Here you go. I've got $100,000 right here to cut. These are items that I believe would be able to be cut, be changed in our department without significantly impacting the services to our community.
I think that's cool. I want to hear them.
And I'll be honest with you. I've asked, our department has a 200, our department has a, has asked for a 300, and I think, what was it, $321,000 allocation from the County General Fund. And I'll tell you where I believe we can cut over $100,000.
Would you say it again? I didn't hear it.
I said, I believe I can tell you where we can cut over $100,000. We have two full-time, unionized lifeguards at Easling Pool. Those two full-time, unionized lifeguards cost the county $72,231 more in the hours they work than if we had part-time employees filling those hours. What I'm saying there is that $72,231 could be cut from our budget. We have properly trained, part-time staff people that can utilize those services, fill those spots, without changing a single service to the citizens of Grand Tarrant County for The other item that I would suggest, and this is going to be a contentious one, and I apologize to our Parks and Recreation Commissioners that are here, our department has $13,325 in direct costs associated with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Your Parks and Recreation Commission is not a mandated service. We have about $16,619 associated. To do the math for you, that's about $1,385 in personnel costs associated with the development and reporting and follow-up from each regularly scheduled Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. The reason I say eliminate the Parks and Recreation Commission, this is an opportunity for the county to change how it provides services. My department, our department, would then be overseen directly by the county administrator, like several other departments sitting in this room, GIS, the IT Department, Human Resources. That there will save you $29,944. So Commissioner Lathrop, the best answer I can provide for you right now is $100,000 in savings in making those two changes.
Great. How would volunteers, are you allowed to have volunteers be lifeguards?
We may be able to let volunteers be lifeguards. That's something I'm not prepared to answer right now.
There must be in the community, a lot of great swimmers that are WSI certified, trained, or we could train them.
I am.
We have, we are one of the few organizations that have the opportunity to train lifeguards and water safety instructors. That is accurate.
Well, I think that's a great idea, and I'd like to see a lot of the other departments come out like this, because we need to save some money.
Chris?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but I don't believe that eliminating full-time, union lifeguards is an option.
It's currently prohibited by the collective bargaining agreement, which requires that the part-time lifeguards be laid off before any full-time lifeguards.
All right. So that's not an option.
Well, it's an option, as long as it's discussed throughout the bargaining unit. No different than the elimination of road deputies or sheriff's department sergeants, lieutenants, or captains. And those were all in the budget as proposals.
At the moment.
At the moment, it's not.
At the moment, this is not an option, is it?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. That's all I was getting at. Okay. Jason, you recently created the position of an office manager. It's been just for a few months. And I'm seeing Aerith go like this. Okay. Is that a position that you could do without? I have not been to the pool in a while. So, I mean, other than seeing the office manager take minutes in Parks Commission meetings, I don't know what duties that the new manager has undertaken. All I know is that it's a new position that's been recently created, and is that something that we absolutely have to have right now? I don't want to close the pool. Eliminating full-time lifeguards is not an option. And I truly, truly don't want to see the elimination of either of the caretaker positions, if I can avoid it at all. So, the only thing I'm seeing right now, the one, the position that would have the least amount of impact on the public is the office manager. That's just from my perspective. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
We have an office manager that began with us April 1st. And if you recall, for several of you Commissioners that weren't on when we went through some of the other changes that we've had in our department over the past seven years, the office manager position was changed to an office manager position because within our staffing plan, we had an aquatic manager. The aquatic manager was with us, had some health issues, and ultimately ended up no longer being employed with Grand Tarrant County. Prior to our aquatic manager in our staffing plan, we had a deputy director. When I came to the county, I was the deputy director. Tim Schreiner left the county. The county decided that I should be the director and never replaced the deputy director. We evaluated this utilizing the Luttrell Report. The Luttrell Report suggested that we change that position to an aquatic manager, someone that could full-time, for someone that could oversee the pool full-time, because overseeing the pool in and of itself is a full-time job. We tried an office, we tried an aquatic manager, who unfortunately didn't work out in the best, for the best interest of the county for a variety of reasons. When our aquatic manager left, that seat remained vacant for several months. Our department had some significant challenges with that seat being left open. The interim administrator at the time, Dean Bott, suggested that in order to help with some of the challenges in our department, that we bring on temporary staff. We were fortunate enough to bring on a lady named Marina Rodriguez, who was a temporary employee that did not have the aquatic manager experience, but excelled in office management. What we found during the six to eight months in following Marina Rodriguez, Aerith Welch stepped into that position on a temporary basis. What we found is we were able to make some significant changes at the pool, have better customer service, provide better service to our, provide better customer service, and we were able to get some of the administrative tasks done that are necessary when you report to a county Parks and Recreation Commission, a county administrator, and sometimes have to appear in front of a county Board of Commissioners. So, the office manager position as it exists now has been, has gone through several iterations. It's not a new position within our department. It's a position that's been changed three or four times. And we found it's actually a very well worked, a very important job within our department. This person is the person who schedules all pool activities, oversees our secretarial staff, and ensures that things are being done on a day-to-day basis in the office, so I can handle the responsibilities associated with being a director and being out in the community, developing strategic partnerships, working on collaboration, dealing with the public, et cetera.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Just a minute. Mr. Thomas.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. I don't know if now's the time to do this, to go through these line items with him?
No, I want to wait.
Okay.
Okay. Sunny?
Jason, I want to speak just a moment about Twin Lakes. As most everyone knows, it's within five miles of my home, and it's been a key part of my life, my kids' lives for, you know, all the way through this thing. I will say without question, Twin Lakes is in better condition now than it has ever been by any of the previous caretakers. And no disrespect for them, Jim and Barb just do an absolutely fabulous job there. If we eliminate the caretaker at Twin Lakes, we might as well mothball the park, because we simply cannot have people renting it unless we have someone there to make sure that the driveway's plowed, the walks are shoveled, the garbage is hauled out at the end of their event, the lights are turned off, and the doors are locked. It's just not possible. And many people that rent that facility, rent it from either early in the morning till well into the evening. I've had opportunity myself to host my daughter's wedding there. I held multiple college soccer camps there over a number of years while my daughter was playing in college. We brought teams from all over the country. They stayed there, then we competed, and it was just a fabulous event there. I personally cannot support the elimination of the caretaker at Twin Lakes. I'm not as familiar with Power Island, but I do know that there is no possible way that that campground can be maintained, the restroom facilities can be maintained, and that we do not have vandalism at those parks without having someone there.
Mr. Thomas?
That's basically all I want to say about that. The other thing that I would mention, and a piece that I'd forgot about, you talked about the Bayside Travelers, I believe, dance group that uses Twin Lakes regularly. Those folks paid for the hardwood floor that's in that facility. All of the new flooring was paid for by that dance group for the opportunity to use it. And that's, if you haven't been there, that's very high-end flooring that's been put into that facility. They paid the bill because they appreciated the opportunity to use it.
Nick?
I want to approach this swimming pool from a little different thing. What if I come over tomorrow and want to go swimming? How much is it going to cost me?
$3.75 is a county resident.
Do you think that the users would stand for a little more?
As part of our 2014 budget, I have suggested, and the Parks and Recreation Commission have accepted, a 5% increase to all of our user fees at the Civic Center. Does that answer your question?
Kinda. I don't know if 5% is enough to cover this particular activity. Now, just for everybody, I used to teach swimming and lifesaving, and I think it's important to keep it open, because everybody should know how to swim. And I've heard that about 30% of the kids in this county can swim, and that's it. But on the other hand, you know, can we afford to do it at the rate, what is costing and what the revenue is right now? We may have to look at a little higher rates. I don't know. Whatever. How many people that are here would pay a little more?
I think both of us would.
Okay, there's your answer. Raise it to 10 bucks.
The ticky plan.
Okay. Yeah, I really think that we've had some good discussions, and I really want to go on to the next people. Jason, I really, do you have anything final comments?
No, I wanted to thank Commissioner Wheelock for his kind comments about our caretakers out at Twin Lakes and the condition of our parks. One of the things that he did touch on, and it's something that is important, especially with the partners and the community members we have here, the Bayside Travelers did install the flooring out at Twin Lakes. And I want to let this commission know that there are several, there are several projects, there are several parks that have been developed, been purchased, been leveraged, with the work of not just our department, but other people, other partners within this community, several of which are in this room. We have a phenomenal partnership in the acquisition and management of Maple Bay with the Regional Land Conservancy. We have a tremendous partnership with Conservation District for the management of the nature education, as well as the master swim group at the Civic Center. I could go on and on with this collaborative, these collaborative efforts that we're working on. In addition to what's happening in our facilities, we're instrumental in the obesity initiative that's being led by Munson. We're leaders of the Parks and Recreation Network that met today, bringing together all Parks and Recreation organizations within our community and within our region. So there are a variety of things that the commission may not be fully aware of, about what our department truly does in ensuring that community capacity that I spoke about earlier. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
I'd like to say to the audience, it's impressive that a million people come to our community and enjoy our parks. But remember that they enjoy them safely because they're impacted by our sheriff's department and our city police department. So they equally contribute to the safety, health, welfare, and cheerfulness that the park system does. They're just as, they're just as important.
I've been real good.
Okay.
I've been behaving.
Yes.
My, last time Greg did an annual membership, he paid about $100 for a year. Greg is my husband. That's, that was the senior rate. Jason, every year you did like a TV 7 and 4 Up North thing, where you could pay $25 and you got $50 worth of coupons. So Greg, as a result of that, paid about $100 for his membership. How much of that $50, or that $25 that I paid for TV 7 and 4 to give me a $50 coupon, how much of that did the Parks Department get?
That's a, the Up North Live deal that you're referring to is something that we've actually locked in for, just so, just for the people that are watching, it's a sweet deal right now. That Up North Live deal is going to go live again the second, I think it's the second of January this coming year. That is a one-time opportunity for community members to receive half-off membership at the pool. That's something that we limit to 200, 200 customers are able to receive that because of the deal we have with Up North Live. It's not a fantastic deal for the county from a financial perspective, but we only see 25, we only see half of that half-off rate. So we get 25% of our normal cost associated with that. It's only available to the first 200 people, but that allows us to kind of get a gauge of where we're at each year. It's part of our marketing campaign with TV 7 and 4, and it's something that we're going to continue to do. It's something that we've budgeted for this year.
Come on, guys.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Getting back to what Commissioner Thomas had to say, we're talking about cost cutting and elimination and all that kind of thing. What does Jason Jones think the best way to increase revenue would be? Raise the price.
Commissioners, I came to you, the past few months have been challenging in our department, Commissioners, and I came to you on September 11th with a grand application to Rotary charities, and that was really kind of the beginning of some challenges that our department's seen within our Parks and Recreation Commission. I came to you with a proposal to fund, a three-year proposal to fund a recreation programmer. Recreation, the reason Parks and Recreation go together is because parks have a hard time making money in and of themselves. Recreation provided within those parks provides the subsidy that allows parks to flourish in our community, not only from a financial perspective, but it brings new people into our parks that otherwise wouldn't be there. I believe in order to raise our revenues, we need to provide different cost center, or different profit centers. And the first place you should start with your Parks and Recreation Department is with the recreation programmer. We have a survey that's ready to go out to several households, including TCAPs households, Forest Area households, and GTACs, that is going to identify and ask our community specifically what they want in programs. When I brought this to you before, I said, over the past three years, we've had three different planning processes, processes, that our community has overwhelmingly said, "We want more programs." The problem is, with those three studies, we didn't find out exactly what programs they wanted. We have that in the hopper, thanks to Rotary charities and a partnership with TCAPs. I'll be honest with you, we need to create more business, and we can create more business through recreation. With the support of this part, this county Board of Commissioners, it's going to take a little money, we're going to have to spend a little money to make a little money. The proposition I brought to you back in September was a risk of about $2,000. And it was shot down because of a policy, is what was stated. It was shot down because you guys were unsure of the budget, and you guys weren't sure about what to do in hiring a full-time staff person or any staff person without knowing what the budget's going on. A $2,000 risk is pretty insignificant in an effort to make additional funding, in the addition, in the effort to make programs that are going to bring more people into our parks and more revenue that will ultimately help us be less reliant, because that is a goal of our Parks and Recreation Commission, and that is a goal of mine as your Parks and Recreation Director, is to be less reliant on the general fund allocation, because I see, and I want to be a team player with our fellow and I want to be a team player with our fellow departments and within this organization, to be less reliant on that.
Okay. I appreciate that. We have a lot more in our mind than just that little hire, okay, up here. Thank you.
I'm not discounting that.
Also, I would thank you for that answer. You're saying programming will help the situation.
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Dave, do you remember who I've got next? Is it the Sheriff or?
Are you going back to the top?
Sheriff?
Resource Recovery.
Resource Recovery?
If you're going back to the top of your list.
Okay, Resource Recovery is next. For those that are leaving, I just want to say thank you for coming. It's really impressive to have this many people show up, and we really appreciate your input.
We meet every Wednesday night.
Watch us on TV, TV nine, twenty-nine, or TV ninety-nine and Channel Two.
Hello, Chair.
I hit some water.
Go ahead.
Susie Shipman, Resource Recovery Manager.
And Jim Cruthers, Chair of the Resource Recovery Council.
So first of all, I'll present the synopsis of the budget that we're proposing for 2014. By fund, the administration that we're looking for, the total is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars and change. Education outreach, ninety-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six. Household hazardous waste, seventy-seven thousand, eighty-five dollars. Pesticide collection, thirty thousand dollars, and brush drop-off, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. And the total is four hundred and three and four dollars. Now, previously, the commission has discussed the funding of the department, fund balance, the landfill surcharge. So I'd like to address those on the revenue side. The Resource Recovery Council met on November seventh, and the consensus was to recommend that budget that I've just outlined and to set a landfill surcharge at two dollars, which is the same as it is for 2013. What that would do is that would begin to drive down the fund balance, which I know is something that this department has been directed to do. And one of the reasons that I've proposed we stay at two dollars is because some of the changes that have happened within 2013 have resulted in somewhat lower expenditures than expected. And Commissioner Wheelock asked me specifically about what that number was. And it looks like we're going to be approximately sixty-three thousand dollars under budget for this year, under what was projected in the, in the adjusted budget. So that's sixty-three thousand dollars of fund balance that I know the county would have preferred to have drawn down. At two dollars, my projection for income for 2014 is based on an average of landfill volumes. And that average that I've used is a seven-year average over the past seven years, including an estimate for 2013. And that comes to seventy-nine thousand dollars. At that rate, the revenue that would come in in 2014 is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And I'm projecting that the fund balance going into 2014 would be approximately four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. With this proposed budget, the fund balance that would be used would be approximately one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Cool. Any questions?
It's an enterprise fund.
I said, is there any new questions?
No complaints, just questions.
I've been doing this, you know, a long time. You know, we've talked about fund balance and, or we've talked about the landfill surcharge. I do not believe it's an equitable way of funding this department, and, you know, all of you have heard my explanation for why that is. I haven't supported it any one time in the twenty-two years it's been voted on, either at Long Lake Township or since I've been sitting on this board. I do believe that Resource Recovery has an excessive fund balance, and we need to be drawing that down. I think we used very, very conservative numbers when we drew our 2013 budget as to what our revenues were going to be. Our revenues exceeded their expectations by a bunch. You know, and, and there's, and there's reasons for that. Don't, don't get me wrong. Not the least of which is the fact of the waste from the Indigo Hotel having to be landfilled because of the contaminated soil. If you remember back when we talked about that as a brownfield project, I'd anticipated, based on the numbers that were being talked about of how many, how many cubic yards, that the increase to Resource Recovery would be about fifty-four thousand dollars in revenue from that one project alone that was not budgeted in any fashion. The Resource Recovery Director left in the middle of the year. We haven't had a period of time where we weren't paying the extra staff. So that also adds to the fact that we are in fact going to probably increase the fund balance at the end of this year. Again, tonight or whenever it comes time to vote, I will not vote to support the surcharge. I still believe that Resource Recovery should be funded by PA sixty-nine. That's what the state law was written for. It should go to the voters, and they should ask, they should be asked whether or not they would like to pay for a recycling program in their community. That being said, it's not something that the county can do. It has to be done by the individual townships. The individual townships have overwhelmingly told us, "No, we don't want to do it. You figure out how to pay for it." And we always hear the discussion, "Well, if we take away the two-dollar surcharge, will the waste haulers lower our rates?" The fact is that the average residential house produces one ton of waste per year. So they're paying two dollars a year to fund recycling. We fund all of these different recycling programs, take it back, dozens of them. And, but the fact is that funding almost entirely comes from the commercial and industrial taxpayers in our community. But yet, our Resource Recovery Department does not do any, I'm not going to say they don't use it, but the fact is, we do not promote any recycling programs for commercial uses. And up until very recently, we've never even given commercial and industrial businesses the opportunity to even report what they were recycling, in fact. And that's been my problem with the whole process for a long time.
Larry?
Just my quick viewpoint on that topic is that in twenty-one years, sitting on this Board of Commissioners as a county commissioner, attending township meetings, township association meetings, having interaction with township supervisors and the mayor, the city commission, all elected officials, members of the public, members of the commercial business in our county, and all eighty-five thousand residents, I've only heard one disagreement on this.
And it happens to be Commissioner Wheelock.
Unless I hear differently, I'm voting for the landfill surcharge.
Is there any more comments from your part?
I, I think I've presented
Okay.
what I'm after, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
And again, we welcome Susie to our community.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
If this is a new position, what are we, about six and a half weeks in now, so?
Yeah.
We're going to get there.
Thank you for your input into this. Appreciate it.
He's here for support.
I know.
Thank you. Good night.
Next is GIS. Ernie? How many people in the room is, is affected by GIS in this room?
Everybody that's got a G.
They just, they just don't know it. They just don't know it.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Good evening. I'm Ernest Gatalia. I'm the GIS Director for Grand Traverse County. I have to say, I'm here with mixed feelings. I'm grateful that you're all giving me the opportunity to talk about GIS tonight. I'm somewhat apologetic because of the lateness of those packets I got to you. I'm sorry, I was very busy, and I, I'm not, I doubt very much you've, you've all had the opportunity to look over it. I'll make references to those, and hopefully I can direct you to the right locations. And thirdly, I'm a little disappointed because I thought everybody in the room was here to support GIS.
They are, they just don't know it.
For the benefit of some of the new commissioners, I thought I might go over a brief history of GIS, and in doing so, give you a certain perspective of where we come from and what the issues are here. In Grand Traverse County, like most counties, I'm sorry, I have my reading glasses on, so I'm going to have to look over them.
So do I. I'm looking at your memo, too.
Okay, good. It's an excellent one, I might add. I actually shortened it. In, in Grand Traverse County, like most counties, GIS originated in the equalization department, and there's a reason for that. Equalization is where parcels are most important, and, and parcels are what sells GIS. So it's a logical place for equal, for GIS to begin. But what happens over time is it also stifles, it tends to stifle GIS, and the fact that GIS has a lot of different facets, and it becomes kind of a tunnel vision perspective, if I might, towards parcel, parcels and parcel maintenance and that sort of. Not to say that those aren't important aspects of GIS, but there's a lot of other important aspects of GIS, and I want to get into that a little bit later. So the board here in, I believe it was 2010, made the correct decision, and I, I'm very grateful for that, to move GIS into its own department, which gave us some flexibility as to what, where we could go, a little, a great deal more flexibility, actually. We were, at the time, GIS personnel in, in equalization were asked to do deed certification. We were out doing appraisal fieldwork when, when it was necessary, and personal property discovery, which are not GIS functions. We occasionally did Board of Commissioner work, occasionally we did administrative work. But the only department we saw regularly outside of equalization was dispatch, central dispatch. And as, as I said before, GIS was promoted to a department in 2010. Unfortunately, at that time, we had another, a number of contracts with various townships that we had to fulfill that we had taken on as, under equalization. And so over the last two years or so, we've been in the process of fulfilling those contracts, which were for tax maps. And, and we did. At this point in time now, we've completed tax mapping in eight townships, and while it doesn't seem like it's a lot, the eight townships we have done are all in the northern tier of the county, aside for one, which is Garfield. I see Chuck Corns here. Anyway, and we're, and we're talking, and we'll be shortly talking with Garfield Township about doing their tax maps. But, so we're, we feel very confident that we're going to be able to complete the parcel adjustment process, and, and we're very pleased with the results. We're very proud of those results, actually. We have a very high level of accuracy in those. But having completed those, those responsibilities that we had taken on quite a while ago, we started moving into some other directions, and one of the things that we've done, a great deal of working out with, is nine-one-one. Their GIS, their initiatives in GIS have grown exponentially, and we've been working with them closely. Right now, I believe we have something like eleven layers in nine-one-one that we maintain. Those are, maybe nine of those are specific to nine-one-one itself, and the other two being generally used layers that have to be kept up extremely regularly so that nine-one-one is dispatching to the correct areas correctly, I guess. We've also expanded into some other departments. We, we're in DPW now. We're also in the, a great deal more exposure in the sheriff's office, in the prosecutor's office. We're dealing with the state of Michigan. We've got a, we've had a couple of layers that we share with the state now, and that's, again, that is a nine-one-one-based reason there. Moving just a little further along here in the last year, and I'm going to get a little farther detailed, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I'm going to do a little geek speak here. But it's, it's important for us, for you to realize that we're moving in a direction that we had specifically mentioned in our strategic plan, which was to incorporate the local government's model of GIS. And that gives us a lot of flexibility. It also, as part of that, is, there's a component of that called the parcel fabric, which we've, I've dedicated one of my technicians to, to learning that process. And it's a very involved process and highly skilled, and we're coming along quite nicely with that. But what the local government's model does is allows us to utilize some canned applications, so we're not developing these ourselves in-house and saves. It's economical, and it's also extremely advantageous to the community. One of the applications which I think I've sent everyone a link to, I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to see the brownfield link that I sent them. Did anybody open that up? So that's one of the, that's a, that was a demo application that we did in-house to, to kind of highlight the nature, the nature of utilizing the local government's model along with the applications that are, are essentially canned applications within that model for developing web applications specific to, or for specific needs within the community. This one being brownfields that could be expanded to Recreation Department, Emergency Management, there's, there's, there's literally dozens of applications out there that come canned and will hook up to this local government's model and, and keep costs down for developing web applications that are spatially enabled. So some of the other applications that I, that we're actually in development right now, or configuring for development, is the, we have a Board of Commissioners model, which is fully functional right now. I haven't distributed that. I'm working on a voter's precinct and polling places, so that, that's soon to be released. The brownfield ones I already have shown you, and then we also have Parcel Viewer to replace the existing Parcel Viewer application that the, the community is using right now. Let me now refer to that. While I'm here, if you guys will open up your, that packet I provided, I think it was distributed on your desks before the meeting, I just wanted to point out that I wouldn't mind if you read this letter. It's kind of lengthy, and I, I was going to read it, and I said, "Well, if I made it a little bit longer, maybe you just let me have what I have through Board," because you'd just get me off, out of here. But anyway, I decided that was kind of underhanded. I decided not to read it. So anyway, on page three here, I start a listing of three of the, or I'm sorry, three pages of our constituencies that we've developed with GIS. Now, some of these are, are, to be perfectly honest, we see, we do rarely. Some of these are daily processes. And I think you can probably imagine that by looking at the entities, how often we deal with them. But we've got quite a, we've got quite a few people who do use our GIS and would greatly miss it if it were reduced or eliminated in any capacity. The next, the following, that listing of our constituency, I wanted to point out something about some of the legacy issues with GIS that were, we, we've had, and, and maybe the of the legacy issues with GIS that were, we've had and maybe the Board is unaware of. I think that it's important that they know. If you look on this, I'm going to hold up the page so we're all on the same one, and this is the page I'm looking at. What I did here was I took some numbers that were available from various department budgets and I just wanted to explain that while GIS, we have our own responsibilities and functions within GIS, we continue to do some of the functions that we had inherited from equalization. So eliminating a position is going to, is going to impact these things too a great deal. So I just want to go through it. We're currently doing tax certification for the Treasurer's Office. Now, the Treasurer, Heidi's in the room and she could probably answer the question quickly, but the Treasurer receives funding, a small, it's a small payment for doing tax certification. GIS doesn't see any of that. It all goes to the Treasurer's Office. And based on what I have here, it's about $8,200 a year. That we provide a service outside of GIS to support the Treasurer. With delinquent tax policies, we took that on in order to save a position in GIS a few years back when we had the budget crunch. We continually do that to the tune of about $21,350 a year. I mean, that's income to the county that normally wouldn't be there if GIS wasn't performing that function. And thirdly, tax map production for equalization. Tax map production, based on the numbers I have here, prior to 2009 or so, was about $6,000 a year. You'll notice that in 2010, 11, 12, and 13, I didn't put any numbers in there. The reason is because tax map production or costs within equalization had dropped off considerably and the reason for that is because GIS took it over. We, for the first time this year, for the first time this year, we produced every county township tax map and the city of Traverse City within-house. So there's a reduced cost to equalization for tax maps that GIS is providing to the tune of about $6,000. If you add that all together, it comes up to about $35,600 annually. We're saving the county by performing, or saving other departments, I should say, by performing these functions within our own. Naturally, if we eliminated a position, I couldn't perform these duties, they would have to go back to the departments that were originally responsible for doing them. One other thing I wanted to bring up was that the GIS web application, which is somewhat old now and as I indicated, is going to be replaced with a more modern one, received about 558,000 connections. Now, these aren't individual hits, these are connections that people got on and used it for several reasons. Some actually organizations will just leave the application up all day. So this isn't in any way an inflated number, this is, if anything, it's conservative, at 558,000. That equates to about 9,300 hours of time if you were to, here's my supposition, I guess, on this, is that if, out of those 558,000 hits, only 10% of those hits were a phone call to the county that lasted one minute. At $30 an hour, to pay an employee $30 to answer that phone would cost about $67,000, the county about $67,000 a year. So the web application, as it stands right now, conservatively, is saving the county about $67,000. I would have to, you know, with all this new development going on and the applications we're talking about rolling out, I couldn't possibly support all that with reduced staff. We're talking, by reducing my staff by one person and reducing my capabilities by 25%, which is an enormous hit for GIS, especially at a time when, if anything else, GIS is growing. And to speak to that point, and this will be my last point, is that, well, I know you've seen the letters too, I just wanted to point out that a lot of, all these letters here, it's just a sample, I went after law enforcement as a target to demonstrate, but I could have solicited and received letters from a number of other departments. But the point I want to make is that, following in that web application and the savings for the county, these other applications that we'll be rolling out here are going to, I think the county's going to realize a great deal of savings based on those. We've become a web and mobile-based society. These are, which, again, I'll add that, that application that I sent the link out to everyone here was actually a mobile application and you guys could have used it, you could view it right now if you had the link on your iPads or on your phone. I pulled it up on my phone, they're great. And all these applications that we'll be rolling out are going to be mobile-enabled applications because that's where, that's where this technology's going. So I just wanted to add that, if times were different, if we weren't in the economic position that we are in right now, I would be standing before you asking for more staff because I frankly believe I can use it. And I think that the potential out there right now for growth in GIS is enormous in the county and the cost savings also are considerable. Cost-saving potential is also considerable. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
New flatbooks, already?
Hey, I'm glad you mentioned that, actually. I'm in the process of putting together a new flatbook. We hope to have it out at the beginning of next year.
Okay. Because the last time I asked, you said deer season.
Oh, did I? Well, I think what I said was that we were hoping the deer hunters would come in and buy up all our old flatbooks, so.
I'd just like to make a comment that, I've been on this board a number of years and many years ago, we've had this discussion with GIS and one of the policies was, you need to do more within the county for each of the individual departments. He's done exactly what the board asked him to do. And he's gone ahead and he's done over and above what we've asked him and just this list is very, very impressive. Of all the things that they are involved with and all the departments they do touch, you've done what the board has asked and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I thank the board for its patience with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Register of Deeds.
Peggy Haynes, Register of Deeds. I just wanted to start out by reading a couple quick emails that I received. This one is from Molly Augustineelli. She says, "I understand that the budget process is underway and the county administration is looking at taking away a full-time employee from your office. I would like to remind the commissioners that the Register of Deeds doesn't just keep some dusty records in the back room that nobody looks at. Many of us in the business community are dependent on the accuracy, accessibility, and timeliness of these records. My husband is a builder, developer, and I'm a Realtor. I can tell you that if a notice of commencement is not filed on time, the builder cannot start his job and everybody is held up right down the line." And she goes on to talk about how it affects real estate and sales. Here's a short note from a title company stating, "Running a successful business requires having the proper tools. Being an owner of a local title insurance company, one of the most critical tools is the office of the Register of Deeds. How well that office runs reflects directly on how well my business runs. Our experience with Peggy Haynes and the Grand Traverse Register of Deeds office has been impeccable." And I would just like to let you know, I watched the meeting last night and I commend you on recognizing how busy the Construction Department and the Health Department are with permits and agreeing to give their employees more hours because of the business. But I would also like you to recognize the fact that my office has the biggest impact on these projects getting started and off the ground. If the mortgages aren't recorded, those builders aren't going to be starting their projects. Same with liens that they want to record, once they've built something, so on, you know, notices, commencement, they have to be done in a timely manner. And I have bran this office successfully, I have been re-elected three terms because I run it well. And I don't want an employee taken away. I don't understand why my department, we have the lowest-paid clerks in my department, why you would take an employee from me when we are top of the line. You can go out anywhere and ask people. The customer service we give, my office is not the typical, come in, I have to pay my bill, okay, you owe this much, so on, you know, receipt for it. We might spend an average of five minutes to 20 minutes to a half an hour, maybe, with an older couple or a surveyor helping them locate records. So we have customers we spend time with. Thursday, all five of the computers, public computers, were full. We received 55 oil and gas leases on Thursday. And if you think it's just a matter of taking the oil and gas lease, putting it in the system, and it's done, we have to look at each of these documents, make sure everything's in order, it meets our recording requirements, calculate all the fees, scan them in, index them in, receipt them, and I audit every document that comes through our office. So all I'm saying is, I would really like to know why you feel that taking a clerk away from me after I relieved the chief deputy position back in 2010 makes any sense."
Any questions? Okay. Peggy, thank you.
And I just want to say one other thing. I have this project that I was approved to do to download all the images. We're putting in 271 libers, I believe, it'll be done in December with a software company. And that's a total of 202,000 pages we are going to have to index. A lot of the title people are excited because this is going to take them back to the 60s with the online records. Last quarter, we brought in, I think it was 8,300 on my online credit card search site alone, and that's profit. More people we use that, the more documents I have in there. And I mean, that's just profit for the county. And that can easily pay for one clerk in my office, if not more. So I just wanted to let you know, that's my feeling, I'm willing to cut somewhere else, take something out of my budget, I don't care, but I don't want to give up the customer service that we give.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Peggy, appreciate it. Next is MSUE. Mr. Pat Cudney.
My name is Patrick Cudney, I'm the District Coordinator with Michigan State University Extension. I have with me tonight Jenny McKeller. Jenny is our Grand Traverse County Office Manager for the Extension Office. We were asked this evening to prepare a report and some numbers for the Board of Commissioners for consideration and deliberation, and Jenny's handing out a number of documents to you. The first document is a document that I was going to present to you next month, we hurried it up and got it ready for this evening. It's our annual report. An annual report on the scope of our services, the number of county residents served, and the impacts of those services within Grand Traverse County. It is a lengthy report, it would take me a lot of this evening to go through it all with you and I will not do that. But I encourage you all to take time to review this 19-page report that gives the full scope of MSU Extension's impacts over the last programmatic year. I would like to take you to the first page of that report where it gives you participation numbers in the bottom of the first page. And I want to point out some numbers within that report. The first that I'll start off with is our 4H Children and Youth Programs. We have 995 county residents that participate in our 4H Youth Development Programs. These are duplications eliminated. We are not counting the same children or the same volunteers who participate in multiple clubs and multiple activities or multiple programs. These are individual county residents, 995. In our Agriculture and Agribusiness Educational Programming, we had 1,292 participants participate in Grand Traverse County Agriculture and Agribusiness Programs that were offered here in the county. We had 406 county residents participate in our Greening Michigan Programs. That's, Greening Michigan is again, a difficult name of an institute that is really our community and economic development programmings. And you'll see those numbers also identified in this report. Our Health and Nutrition Programs served 1,839 residents. Those numbers are primarily the low-income families in Grand Traverse County that are eligible for our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program education. These are the children that are in our school districts with a 50% free and reduced lunch population. That is the population that's eligible to participate in our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. It's a federal grant that comes as part of the partnership with Michigan State University and we offer that program to the grade schools within Grand Traverse County that have that 50% free and reduced lunch population. The next 18 pages are details about each of these institutes, the programs that were offered, where Grand Traverse County residents participated in those programs, programs offered here in the county, programs that may have been offered online or virtually or through distance education. And you'll see the broad array and the scope of services that come from the partnership that you have with Michigan State University. I also would like to point out the very last page of the report. And why I like to remind the commissioners is when we went through our restructure three years ago, I've encouraged you each year not just to look at the staff that are sitting in the Grand Traverse County MSU Extension Office. They are a key part of our team, but they are only part of the team that serves Grand Traverse County in offering these educational resources. Our people are all specialists, we no longer can afford to have generalists in any given area. So if you look at this list of Extension Educators serving Grand Traverse County, you see their name, you see their specialty, and you see their email, their contact information. You'll see throughout this report, their work reflected. A number of these people do reside and sit in the Grand Traverse County Office and we're glad that they're there, but a lot of these people travel into the county to meet needs that are defined here. The next document I'd like to hand out to you, or I'm sorry, Jenny will hand out to you, is a document that I provided for you about three or four months ago in a previous report. And this is when I highlighted our My Spartan Impact website. My Spartan Impact is a university website that provides statistics in regions across the state. Those regions are broken up by the districts, the districts that district coordinators serve. So as a reminder, I have nine counties that I'm responsible for, from Manistee up to Sheboygan County. That website highlights numbers within each of those districts. I felt it imperative to break these numbers down by county. So individual county boards of commissioners, individual stakeholders within those nine counties could see some vital statistics about Michigan State University and the impacts of our programs, again, in Grand Traverse County exclusively, because I know that's what you're keenly interested in as Grand Traverse County Commissioners. A couple of key things that I would like to point out is we talk about economic impact and what is that return on investment. Last year, fiscal year 2012, and the university is on a July 1st to June 30th fiscal year, we spent, Michigan State University spent $1,666,382 on local businesses. Those are businesses in Grand Traverse County, businesses with an address in Grand Traverse County. The total economic impact of Michigan State University on Grand Traverse County was almost $42 million. Again, that number, that total economic impact comes from an independent consulting group, the Anderson Economic Group, that looks at the research corridor universities and their impacts on the state of Michigan. They're able to break that down by county and I put these numbers together by county because I thought you would be interested in that. There's some other statistics on that that I went over with you previously. I know our time is short tonight, but I again, wanted to remind you about, we are here, we are here because of this partnership and we're doing business in Grand Traverse County because of this partnership. That is a direct economic impact, but much more importantly is, we're meeting the educational needs of county residents in multiple ways through multiple partnerships. And this partnership that is Cooperative Extension is a three-legged stool. It receives federal funding, it receives state funding, and it receives- It receives federal funding, it receives state funding, and it receives county funding. When we restructured our organization three years ago, we moved away from individual and independent arrangements with the 83 counties in the state of Michigan. We went with one standardized contract arrangement. It's called an Agreement for Extension Services. We signed a five-year memorandum of understanding with these counties, and that annual, or that five-year agreement is predicated by an annual plan of work, again, an annual agreement for extension services. It's based on a $31,000 base cost plus 30 cents per resident of the county based on the most recent census. That figure has not changed for three years. It's not changed in our request in fiscal year 2014. That total cost to Grand Traverse County is in that plan of work, and that's $57,096. Again, that's the same cost for every county in the state based on a $31,000 base and 30 cents per resident of the county based on the most recent census. In addition to that, commissioners have chosen and agreed to fund a full-time 4-H position as part of our agreement. The base provides you a half-time 4-H program coordinator. The county provides an additional $27,500 in the current fiscal year to have that 4-H position full-time. We have a very large, very viable, and growing 4-H Youth Development Program in Grand Traverse County, and it's one that I know you're proud of. I believe Jenny also handed out a brief overview or a handout about 4-H and the impact of 4-H, and shows statistics of youth that are involved in 4-H Youth Development Programs and their success, and their future successes in life. There's one more document that I believe that you were handed, and we provided a breakdown of our Grand Traverse County General Fund allocation, our entire budget. I ask you to look at the bottom of that spreadsheet, and I'm referring to the spreadsheet now with the yellow bar graph at the bottom. We went back five years to show what our Grand Traverse County partnership allocation was. In 2010, our budget was $344,319. Again, this is the resources that are provided by Grand Traverse County. This doesn't include the resources that we bring to the table in state and federal resources to provide our services and programs. In 2011, we reduced our budget to $294,904. In 2012, we reduced our budget to $282,233. Our current fiscal year budget 2013 was reduced to $279,165. The budget request that I submitted for fiscal year 2014 was once again reduced by $11,814 to a request of $267,351. We've continued to be a partner, not add to the problem, but try to contribute to a solution as the county's dealt with its financial difficulties. We feel we've been a good partner. Our numbers are solid and growing. I'm very proud of our program here. We have an excellent core group of staff, and I appreciate your support.
Larry.
Just want to let you know, coming from a rural area with regard to my county commissioner district from Acme, Whitewater, and somewhat part of East Bay, but previous district was Union and Fife Lake, I did get a lot of feedback over the years about how important MSU Extension is to the ag industry in Grand Traverse County. And they heavily rely on MSU Extension for a lot of things in their operations on an annual basis. And it's, basically, they've told me that it would be unthinkable not to have you available and have that resource available, not only for the ag industry, which is predominant in Grand Traverse County, but we have to recognize it is one of the lead industries in Michigan. It's second or somewhere in that area, third, so we need to recognize that. And I'd also like to, and you brought up the whole layout of the question I was going to ask is, we've continued to negotiate lower appropriations over years for, really, and you guys haven't dropped a dime. I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job in providing services to the county, and you've done it for a lower cost, and you continue to do that. So, quite frankly, I think we need to take a deep look at this because we're getting one heck of a dividend off the appropriation and the value of MSU Extension.
Maybe, I don't know, Mr. Bennet could tell me this, or it's you. What is it that we spend in your services as a county?
Sure. Our total allocation, our request for 2014 is $267,351. Of that $267,351, the contract with Michigan State University for that base assessment and the full-time 4-H program coordinator position equates to $85,496.
From us?
From you. That's part of the $267,000.
I get it.
That's what the university bills the county for, our investment of state and federal resources back into the county.
I was raised in 4-H, and I was a cherry farmer for 15 years, so I think it's a good deal.
The county employees, I'm sorry.
Chris.
Pat, please don't be offended by my question here, but we have to look, we are going to look at everything in this lovely budget in front of us because the fact of the matter is, our expenses are outpacing our revenue even if we went out and bonded. We have capital expenses, we've cut our capital budget, we cannot continue to do that. The Sheriff's Department has to have cars that run. Our roads can't leak, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm going to ask you a few, a question right now while I can here. The health and nutrition program, I'm seeing you have an impact on 1,839, according to this piece of paper here, individuals. And you've got two, a health and nutrition educator and a health and nutrition program instructor. Now, I have to tell you, I learned a heck of a, I'm going to switch horses here briefly. I went and saw 4-H. Larry Fleese and his wife Marilyn took me out and showed me what 4-H does, and I have to tell you, 4-H puts kids through college. It's a great program. But, the health and nutrition program, 839 people. How much does that cost us for those 1,839 people?
That program is part of our core set of deliverables that the county receives as part of our base assessment. So, that cannot be costed out individually per county. I cannot cost out, the primary audience and the majority of those numbers are directly served, again, by our supplemental nutrition assistance program. You're hearing right now in the news federally, lots of discussion about the farm bill, lots of discussion about SNAP funding. I'm sure you've heard it. It's all over the news right now.
Oh, yeah.
That impacts us, that impacts you, that impacts residents of Grand Traverse County. Our portion of that within the farm bill, and the largest percentage of that audience, are those low-income families that are in a 50% free and reduced lunch population, grade school setting, where we come into those schools and we offer nutrition education for the lowest-income families, and how best to use their limited dollars. Those dollars 100% come from the federal government and Michigan State University.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Sonny.
Pat and I have had this discussion before.
I'm looking forward to it.
Here we go.
You know, you, we all, everyone I think in the room probably knows I have a very long history with 4-H program, and I'm absolutely a believer in that program. You know, my problem with Pat that I have to wear with his budget and what I know about MSU Extension is very simple. We have a core set of services that are provided, $86,000 a year. That includes the 4-H program and those kind of things. How do I get from $86,000 to $267,000? Tell me exactly what I'm getting for that other $180,000 bucks.
We were prepared for this tonight, Commissioner Wheelock.
I figured you probably were.
I would ask you to refer to the spreadsheet that you provided that shows that each fiscal year, as they've progressed from 2010 to 2014, starting right at the top, you're looking at revenues, 101,257, $1,000, $1,050 this year. We used to revenue grants through Grand Traverse County. We no longer do that. All of our grants come through Michigan State University Extension if they're Michigan State University grants, except for the North Shore Safe Kids Injury Prevention Program. That is still a Grand Traverse County-centric program, and it's part of this overall budget. If you look under expenses, 101,257, you can see the full-time longevity, part-time personnel leave, all of those are the employment costs for the 2.4 county employees that serve our office. So, Commissioner Wheelock, very directly, $149,755 of our total $267,351 budget is built into three employees that work out of our office and serve Grand Traverse County residents. It's 2.4 because the other 60% of one of the positions is paid for through grants. Below that, you drop into the operational costs. We have an office supply budget of $3,250. We have a printing, copy machine usage of $7,000. It's a, it's a payment, it's from a purchase agreement we have on a copy machine that we pay off over time, and eventually it will be paid off and owned. The copy machine lease is part of that, $2,000. Postage, $1,750. We have $9,000 that go to MIS IT charges. That's a payment back to the county for IT support. The next one, 818, is the contractual services line item. That's the $85,496 that secures the university's investment in Grand Traverse County. Followed by that is telephone, again, another telephone line item for local and long distance of $550. We have $2,000 for travel. That travel is for our county employees. We provide the travel and operating budgets for the university employees. We have zero for conventions and conferences. We have zero for travel for 4-H because, again, we provide the operating budget for our staff. And we have $500 for employee training, for a total of $118,646. So, Commissioner Wheelock, if you add the 149,755 and the 118,646 together, you'll find a figure of $268,401 minus $1,050 in revenue that comes from reimbursements for copies that we make for other departments in the county and MSU Extension, we pay for those copies. And that comes up with our 2014 fiscal year request of $267,351. That is our budget in its entirety, and I would like to point out that every dollar the county contributes secures $8 to $10 in state and federal resources. This budget request equates to less than one quarter of 1% of your entire county general fund allocation.
Any other questions? Pat, good job. Do you have any comments?
Just here for support.
All right. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the opportunity tonight.
Appreciate it. Next is the Sheriff Department.
Do you want me to sit there?
That's for short people.
Yeah, we tried that the other night. When we put Nate in the sir chair, he, it just didn't work at all.
I think Warren shut it off.
So, did we find out about the recall on the cars, Nate?
Yes, we did.
There was a recall on the cars.
Only 40.
You and I had talked about that, and then I asked Nate about what the status of that was last night, and he was, he was kind of dumbfounded. I'm afraid I had the information that he didn't have yet.
Lucky you, you get to sit with us two nights in a row, Nate.
I've been assured, though, that tonight's only 15 minutes.
That's right.
The last time we did this was three hours.
Yeah, I know. That's why I said 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and your infinite wisdom leaving the best for last. And due to the 15-minute time requirement, we had to pare down significantly our presentation. There's a lot more to what we do and can provide much more information on calls for service, accidents, complaint, not recorded in the Michigan Incident Crime Reporting System, which we'll talk about later. There are literally thousands of calls for service, but we've kind of tried to tailor this to 15 minutes. So, if you'd like any more information, we have and we will provide that to you. First, I would like to express my displeasure with the budget process. As I have stated previously, I think the sheriff's office was treated unfairly, and we were thrown into a hole, and now we are forced to build our way out of that hole with justification for our staff, officers, and our operation. There was no opportunity to sit down with the county administrator and talk about possible solutions prior to the recommended cuts in our staff. Hopefully, we will be able to move forward and work collectively to solve the budget issues. Mr. Bennet's recommended budget summary has some misleading information. He indicates that the county has gone through several years of cutbacks while expanding the number of road patrol officers. That's not true. The number of county-funded and township-funded officers has remained the same for the last 10 years. This chart shows that full-time law enforcement officers for the sheriff's office has remained the same. The same information we got from the county human resources office. He states that the number of officers on the road in Grand Traverse County is well in excess of that which is provided in similar jurisdictions. Not correct, as you will see from the comparisons we provide. He uses the index offenses as a comparison, but the index offenses only account for approximately 19% of the total reportable crimes which occur in Grand Traverse County. We will talk about this later. He proposes to eliminate one sergeant, one lieutenant, and a captain. Later, we will show that Grand Traverse County is well within and even below other counties as far as command staff and command and supervisory staff. Grand Traverse County has a better command-supervisory staff ratio per officer that is better than all but two comparable counties. So, you have heard and been told that the sheriff's office, law enforcement duties are non-mandated services. Case law and statute recognize as one of the sheriff's primary responsibilities the maintenance of law and order in those areas of his county not adequately policed by local authorities. Constitutional mandates provide for and ensure law and order within the county, which gives rise to the recognition of the office of sheriff as the chief law enforcement officer for his county. Michigan law provides that the sheriff is the officer primarily responsible for providing patrol and traffic services on county primary and local roads. The law clearly requires the sheriff to accept and respond to all reports of criminal conduct. The courts have affirmed the statutory duty of the sheriff to perform all reasonable services within the jurisdiction of their offices, including the common law peacekeeping duties of the sheriff. In some cases, county boards of commissioners have sought to curtail or eliminate their sheriff's peacekeeping activities, noting that full-time road patrol is a non-mandatory function. They have sought to do so by attempting to direct the sheriff to lay off specific officers and curtail specific functions, a clearly unconstitutional approach. Therefore, the sheriff needs deputies to accomplish what is recognized as one of the sheriff's primary responsibilities. Going on television telling all county residents and visitors to just be good, don't fight, don't steal, don't rape and rob others probably won't work. This board has long said that public safety is a priority in Grand Traverse County. One of the mission goals is, quote, "where the safety of its community is of utmost concern," end quote. The 2013 ranking prioritization matrix of 118 programs lists the sheriff's office, road patrol, and jail tied for number three. The county's 2010-2012 strategic plan revealed that personal safety and the feeling of security are high priorities of citizens and commissioners alike in Grand Traverse County. In the Quality of Life Index Survey, 85% of the respondents indicated that they were somewhat or very concerned with regard to public safety in their community. It further states that the county commissioners continue to focus on the safety of its community as a high concern. Traverse City Travel, formerly the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is spending 70% of their advertising budget on off-season, non-summer areas to attract visitors to this area. advertising budget on off-season, non-summer areas to attract visitors to this area. Their goal is to position Traverse City as a four-season destination. From 2011 to 2012 alone, there was a 26.5% increase in out-of-state visitors. The hospitality industry has seen a 19% increase since 2008 in assessment revenue. The Chamber of Commerce and Traverse City Travel are doing everything they can to keep this area growing. Speaking of population, the population in Grand Travers County increased 12% from 2000 to 2010. From 2000 to 2012, the estimate is that the population has grown 15%. From 2000 to 2010, Grand Travers County was the third fastest-growing county in population in the state. Looking at comparable counties, their population growth ranged from minus 2.3% to 3.9%. The population in the county continues to grow while the city remains fairly constant. Almost 75,000 people live in the county outside of the city of Traverse City. Traverse City Travel stated that in 2012, there were 3.3 million tourists that visited the Traverse City area. They approximate 3,000 tourists a day from September through February and over 15,000 tourists per day from March through August. Two weeks ago, there were 5,000 bicyclists in the Iceman Cometh Race finishing in Grand Travers County. And can anyone tell me the last time they heard someone say, "I'm going to Lenoir County for my two-week summer vacation"? The county planning department indicates we have approximately 10,000 people that commute to Grand Travers County every day for employment. Grand Travers County is the regional hub for northern Michigan for business, manufacturing, shopping, and tourism. I don't think the comparable counties has what Grand Travers County has. Attached with this report, you will find a list of over 30 top 10 designations for Traverse City from print and electronic media sources. We are definitely on the map. So do you think that the population in this area is going to remain the same for the next 10 years? The forecast is that the population will increase 14% to over 101,000 people between now and 2020. So people are coming to Grand Travers County and they will continue to come to Grand Travers County because we are different, we are unique, we are Traverse City, and we are Grand Travers County. In light of all this, the county administrator feels we have too many police officers. I don't think so. In presenting some comparable statistics to the board on October 16th, he indicated that the sheriff's office had 35 county police officers. We have 46 county-funded officers, including the sheriff, undersheriff, command staff, sergeants, and deputies. Lieutenant Clark from our office contacted the counties listed on this chart and spoke with either a lieutenant or captain and recorded the, quote, "county-funded command officers" for those departments. If you look at the comparables we provided, the average command staff is 3.3 per county. We are under that average. If you look at the command staff comparables, including sergeants, the average is 9.4 with Grand Travers County having 11 sergeants, which include patrol, administrative, and detective sergeants. However, when you look at the average number of command personnel, majors, captains, lieutenants, and sergeants, the ratio of command staff to police officers is 4.6 officers per command staff. And Grand Travers County is at one command staff per 4.8 officers. I don't believe we are out of line or have too many command officers. We contacted the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, who track certified police officers for all law enforcement agencies in the state. The number represented on this chart is the past three-year average for each department. Remember that these comparisons assume full employment with no vacancies. This rarely, if ever, happens. We typically average one or two vacancies annually. So even though we have a complement of 46 full-time county-funded officers, rarely, if ever, are we fully staffed. All police agencies in Michigan use the MICR or Michigan Index Crime Reporting System for reporting crimes in the state. Mr. Bendah used this system when comparing, quote, "index crimes" in putting together the summary, which is in his budget summary. We use the same system, however, included all of the crimes reportable and those which the sheriff's office handles. If you believe and want to rely on this information, we will look at some comparisons. Mr. Bendah uses, quote, "index crimes" for a comparison of other counties. Index crimes only account for approximately 19% of the total reported crimes in Grand Travers County. 80% of the crimes were omitted. The index crimes are major crimes against persons: homicide, auto theft, larceny, burglary, and so on. While the remaining reportable crimes that are required to be recorded include such things as drunkenness, obstructing police, disorderly conduct, operating while intoxicated, trespassing, miscellaneous other criminal offenses. And if you want to see that, I do have both of those lists. When looking at the comparisons from 2010, 11, and 12 by counties and various police departments in those counties, it is clear that the Grand Travers County Sheriff's Office handles the majority of reportable crimes in Grand Travers County. Please note that the comparable counties have a lot of help from other police departments in those counties. We get minimal assistance from the state police in Grand Travers County. As a matter of fact, a July 2nd email indicated that the state police were directed to concentrate strictly on traffic enforcement from July 3rd through July 7th, except for high priority emergencies, crimes in progress, and officer backup situations. If I recall correctly, that's usually a pretty busy time in Grand Travers County for law enforcement. This only reinforces the fact that the sheriff's office is the primary law enforcement agency in the county. The sheriff's office is not in a position to generate large sums of revenue. We can't write more tickets or arrest more people to increase revenue. A longstanding policy of the Board of Commissioners has been to fingerprint county residents at no charge. Although not a large source of income, approximately $8,000 annually, every little bit helps. The board for the past two years has frozen the cost of the townships for community policing officers, a $42,000 annual savings to the townships. Some time ago, we approached the board in an attempt to generate some more revenue from outstanding housing and medical bills from the jail. We propose to speak with individual inmates and those who had been released from jail in an attempt to settle current and past due accounts by reducing the amount owed or, if that was not an option, to pursue collection through the court system. We were not allowed to try to increase our revenue by that method. From March through October of this year, we have turned over to a collection agency, Core Recovery, almost $1.5 million in unpaid housing and medical costs incurred at the jail and received from Core Recovery, a whopping $10,700 in collections. I think we should revisit this proposal. Finally, it's recommended that the work release facility no longer be used. If that is not used and abandoned, the capacity for the jail will be 168 beds. With recent populations in the 165 to 70 inmate count, the jail would be dealing with an overpopulation situation on a continuing basis. State law regarding jail overcrowding would require a 10% reduction in the population to relieve the jail of that overcrowding situation. We have been managing the jail population by boarding out prisoners and early release of prisoners without the state law dictating our policy. The higher jail capacity allows us more flexibility in dealing with any overcrowding situations as opposed to violating the Jail Overcrowding Act. It seems rather clear to us that Mr. Bendah wants fewer police officers on the street and to shift the cost of deputies to the townships. Additionally, without requested money in the budget to board prisoners out to relieve jail overcrowding if that occurs, the solution is to release inmates early in order to save money. We do not agree with this line of thinking. Any questions you may have on anything we have presented, we would be more than happy to discuss with you and show you where and how we got our information. Thank you.
Questions? Wow, I'm impressed. You did a nice job.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you protect and patrol our county parks?
We, yes, we do, not on a scheduled basis, okay? Officers on patrol will go into Twin Lakes Park. They will, what would be the other one? Maple Bay Park.
What about the Civic Center?
That's in the city.
Oh, that's the city.
They get a little upset when we do things in the city, so we try to have a hands-off approach there, so.
But all 3 million of the people that come in this area, you impact their safety, right?
Oh, yes. And that's a lot of people. And like I said, we are different than these comparable counties. So, you know, it's difficult because we are different, because we are unique, we are that regional hub. People come from Calcasas, you know, they're coming to city, into the city. But unless you're coming from Leonard County, you have to come through Grand Travers County to get into the city.
Thank you.
Chris O'Neil.
Well, you know, we've talked a lot of times about jail capacities and all of those kind of things. You know, we've overwhelmingly beat it to death. Bob sitting back there smiling, he knows what I'm going to say. We need a 300-bed jail in this community and we don't have it. And I don't see any time real soon that we're going to have the money to build it. But whether we like it or not, you know, jail capacity is about philosophy. I firmly believe the philosophy of our community is if you commit a crime here, you're going to go to jail. And the philosophy of our judges is if you commit a crime here, the sheriff arrests you, prosecutor charges you, their job is to send them to jail. And, you know, we have all these other community correction programs, which I sit on that board also, you know, they certainly have merit. But the fact is, the community wants a punitive portion. And that punitive portion is not available if we don't have officers on the streets to make the arrest and we don't have a bed in the jail to put them there when they are arrested. And, you know, that is absolutely without question a huge priority for me. When we talk about the community police officers in the townships, and Chuck is sitting back there and he's just grinning, but the fact is, we talk about those officers, but they're in those townships 18% to 20% of the time. You know, when we had the discussion in Long Lake Township about eliminating the township police officer there, you know, with the particular officer, you know, and part of it was the particular officer was there, but he was a training officer, he had to go to court, he had to do this and that, you know, they were down to, you know, he was there 17%, 18% of the time. And they just decided based on that dollar amount, they couldn't afford to do that. But, that being said, I also spent 36 years as a firefighter EMT in Long Lake Township, and I know how many times in the night that I needed a patrol car, that car said Garfield Township on the side of it. And especially if I needed a second car, you know. So the fact that those are community police officers and they're being paid by Garfield Township, they're being paid for by Acme Township, it doesn't matter, they're Grand Travers County Sheriff's deputies first, they're under the direct supervision of the sheriff, and they serve this community as a whole.
I sent some letters to the townships. And, for example, Acme Township has one officer. 80% of the time, the officer is not there. He works 40 hours a week. There's 168 hours in a week when you put in vacation time, you put in holidays and personal time. He's only there about 20% of the time. So 80% of the time, in those townships that have one community police officer, Garfield is a little different, and I've talked with Mr. Corn about that, and we realize that. But in those townships, 80% of the time, we are responsible for, for the most part, for law enforcement in that township. Those townships without Long Lake, Green Lake, Grant, Union, Mayfield Township, or not Mayfield, okay? We're it for those townships all the time.
And it's also difficult to set at that accident scene and have them tell you that the closest car is in Acme or Williamsburg and you're going to be awed, you know. And it's tough to stand, sit in the driveway where you have a possible attempted suicide and the policy is you cannot enter that house or go into the driveway until such time as an officer arrives and you can see the wife standing on the porch screaming, you know. Those are difficult situations. And trust me, I've been there more times than I would like to even remember. And I have to admit that more than one time I violated that policy and went into the house, so.
Larry.
It is what it is.
Well, I think from our prior discussions that, if I got the feeling correctly from the Board of Commissioners, that they were reluctant to do any reductions within the Sheriff's Department. I think it's important to supplement the sheriff's report in a couple of ways. One is that we really have a unique model compared to other communities. And that is, you know, the Board of Commissioners back in early 2000s told the sheriff back then, we were not going to increase general patrol unless we got additional supplemental funding. And that came from the federal government. That was during the expansion of the COPS program. And it's to the credit of the townships that have participated with us, that they came a partner with the county. And as that grant wound down over three years, we had a sharing of the costs between the townships and the county. And that's the way we've operated since the early 2000s. And we've gotten a huge dividend from the participation from the townships in contracting for officers within their jurisdiction. And so where we grew in population, the townships ended up assisting us in funding that increase in officers where we really needed it based on the population over since 2000, since the beginning of 2000. So, you know, that's not reflective in the comparisons because I will tell you that with my experience with the Michigan Association of Counties, a lot of counties decided to eliminate their road patrol unless the public went out for a public safety milledge and it was renewable every three years. And, you know, we have case after case where those counties are underutilized in officers or don't have officers available where we do. So we really have a unique model. We got to thank the townships for being a partner with us and to help supplement that cost because if we didn't have that partnership, if you take away what they're helping us fund these officers with, we wouldn't have 17 community policing officers. We'd probably have six or seven. And we'd be behind the ball in terms of getting calls and, you know, getting the calls and responding to crimes. So, you know, we got to thank that partnership, which is not reflective in the report to that detail. The other thing is that we did, as we were having budget problems, the townships were having budget problems, we didn't want those officers to go. We recognized the dividend we were getting off this partnership and we wanted those officers to stay. What would we do for the last several years? We came to them and said, listen, we're going to freeze your payment to us, we're going to hold those constant for a couple of years. One, because we know you're having financial difficulty and we want to keep those officers. But two, we recognized there was probably some discrepancies in the past that, you know, the actual officer cost in some cases were lower than what we were charging the townships on an annual basis by virtue of what raises they got. So we tried to make up that differential by freezing that out. So we got to recognize that. And thirdly, so I just want to compliment, you know, the townships and the county and the sheriff's report with regard to the justification of his staff. The only question I have for the sheriff and undersheriff and probably Bob is that, I guess it was my recollection that based on the reflection of the population that you were seeing in the you were seeing in the work release facility where the past year, previously it was somewhat full, because the judges would put people on work release, and then we weren't seeing that category because the crimes are more serious, the sentencing was more serious, and it didn't make sense to staff it. We brought those people over. So, I guess the question I'd have is, and maybe you can't answer it tonight, but at some point in time, we've gotta figure out, do we have another, do we have a long enough trend to figure out if we need to maintain that work release facility, or at some point in time, do we wanna reopen that up again to save the outboarding costs? And is there something we can do in that matter there? So, I mean, that's just something we need to take a hard look at.
Yeah, I think Captain Hall is here, he can correct me, but I was there yesterday, and I think it's five in the work release, so it's, and it's 26 beds, so it's, and when we were here, I believe in August...
Right.
Showed that to open that up for work release and for inmate workers and for community workers, that we would have to staff that 24 hours a day with five people, and that would give us 20... What's the number in the 400 section, Captain Hall? Usable beds?
It's 24.
24.
If you have inmate workers in there.
Right.
And it's about 18.
18. So, we would gain 18 beds, but it would be very expensive to get those 18 beds. And you did mention the fact of the cooperation with the townships. You saw in that one slide, other counties in the state, they got a whole bunch of different police departments. I was talking to the captain in, I believe it's Lendenway County today, and told him, we have, you know, contracts with these, and they're all the same, they're all uniform, they follow the same rules, drive the same cars, and he thought that was rather unique, that we had this arrangement up here, that we didn't have a one-man police department here, and a two-man here, and a six-man here. So, that arrangement has proven to be very effective on a management level.
And on a financial level.
That also.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Last night, Blair Township agreed to a 2.5% increase on their community cap. I suspect that other townships will do about the same thing.
I think they probably communicate back and forth a little bit on those matters, so that would be this board's decision on whatever that is, but...
Yeah, that's what they passed last night, what 2.5, one of the...
Okay. Any other questions?
The statement, you know, I was an EMT too before I became a doctor, and I've seen police in action for many years, and an interesting thing is, a policeman or fireman is probably the only person you know that's willing to risk their life for you and not even know you, and so, how do you put a price on that?
Thank you.
Scotty?
I guess, Larry made a comment earlier that we won't touch the sheriff's budget. You know, I had a discussion with the sheriff. Whether we like it or not, the bottom line is, the sheriff's budget is 1/3 of our general fund budget. I cannot give you a free pass and say you are exempt from any cuts. I am more than willing to have conversations with you about if there is someplace in your budget that we can make cuts. We heard from other department heads here tonight that they just want the opportunity to tell us where they think they can save money. You know, we're all in this process later in the year than we'd ever dreamed we were, and there's dozens of different reasons for that. But what I'm hoping that we can do is pass a balanced budget and all stay at the table and get this thing taken care of, because we have to cut significant money out of this 2014 budget, we all know that. But I can't give you a pass, but I will be more than willing to have conversation with you about, you know, taking money from your budget.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good job. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioners, where do you wanna go now? Do you wanna take a break?
I would like to have more public, you know, take a break and then public comment, and then schedule another budget meeting.
You know, if people have been sitting here, let's let them, I mean, I'm willing to sit here...
Well, I didn't wanna take any more than a five-minute break.
Let's let them come and talk if they want.
You ought to sit there, okay. I mean, I'll take direction from you.
I mean, people have been here since 7:00.
I totally agree.
Anybody that can hang in there for as long as they have.
Especially old people.
Well, we will go into public comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. Andrew McDonald, 505 West 12th Street. I'm coming from this a little different angle. I own Blue Water Promotions. I'm lucky enough that, to rent the Civic Center three times a year for three events, the Traverse City Boat Show, the Up North Lake and Cottage Show, and the Traverse City Women's Expo. We work with Jason Jones and his staff. We value our relationship with the county, we hope to continue. I don't have, you know, I can't tell the county what to do. I will say this, our events last year drew 5,000 people to Traverse City and Grand Traverse County. Many of those people came from out of town, and I do think that that does provide a positive economic impact for Traverse City and Grand Traverse County, and we certainly hope to continue our events well into the future.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Thank you for waiting all evening to be able to do this. I appreciate that.
You're lucky I'm persistent. My name is Jonathan Campbell, 7058 Leori Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. I'm the president of Lake Effect Associates in Traverse City, and recently we had the privilege to work with Jason Jones and the Grand Traverse County Parks and Rec Department on a project called Experience 231. Experience 231 is a unique partnership with the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy, the Leland Conservancy, the Grand Traverse Conservation District, Tart Trails, Sleeping Bear Dunes, Garfield Township, and the Grand Traverse County Parks and Rec. The project started with the creation of a smartphone app that has now been leveraged into the creation of the Experience 231 Fund at the Community Foundation, and a new website that we'll be launching in December. The fund will help support the app and the local partners that have invested into this project with funding for future projects. The Experience 231 app is the first of its kind in the state with the collaboration of local government, nonprofit groups, and private industry to create a resource for people to access information for outdoor recreation opportunities in our region. This model is so unique and successful that we have presented it at the National Outdoor Recreation Professionals Conference, and have been asked to present at the Governor's Conference on Tourism in January. The app currently has over 300 experiences, and many of the most popular ones are properties managed by the Grand Traverse County Parks and Recs Department. Our region is home to some of the most amazing natural resources, and it takes a lot of work to keep these areas updated, accessible, and maintained. The knowledge of management and conservation that is housed inside the Parks and Recreation Department is key to keeping these properties available to the residents and millions of visitors to the Grand Traverse County every year. My family and I spend a considerable amount of time, amount of our free time in the water and the trails of Power Island in the summer. On some of the busy days, there are hundreds of people enjoying the beauty of the island, and I often hear comments that how wonderful it'd be to have a place like this in our backyard. It is truly amazing, unique place. What we don't see on a daily basis is the amount of work that goes into preserving and maintaining this park. Without constant supervision and management, it would be easy to see this island deteriorate quickly by heavy use. As a user, I rely heavily on the Parks and Rec Department to keep this island beautiful and usable for me and my family. Our county should feel privileged to have such a wonderful director in Jason Jones and a staff that works diligently to keep our parks and facilities in such wonderful shape. Our region is known for its outdoor recreation, and by eliminating the Parks and Rec Department or any position inside of it, we would be sending the wrong message to our residents and visitors that view our county as a model for promoting this outdoor lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Lauren Vaughn, 2254 Lakes North Drive in Interlock in Green Lake Township. And I know budget cuts are always tough. Working for the city, I find that out as well. It's easy, or sometimes you look for the low-hanging fruit, and some of the comments that have been in the paper and such make it seem like Parks and Recreation might be that, part of that low-hanging fruit. And, you know, I would think that there's probably a more equitable way to look at budget cuts than just to find what may be envisioned to be the easy things to take. There was a $900,000 cut that was mentioned in the paper as the amount that might be necessary. Based on the total county budget, comes out about 2.5%, roughly, 2.5% to 3%, and the county hires good department heads that certainly could be challenged to come up with 2.5% to 3% cuts in their departments as opposed to picking one department to eliminate or severely cripple. I would hope that you would look at those things. Turning over the operation of the Parks and Recreation Department to facilities management, I wouldn't see as an advisable thing, because they deal with totally different things. Facilities management deals with strict, you know, with the operation of the facilities themselves, and not with the people part of it, which is what the Parks and Recreation Department specializes in. And the county is very fortunate to have Jason as their director. He's one of the brightest young minds in this field in the state, and that's evidenced by, that the Michigan Recreation Park Association membership has elected Jason as president for 2014, and in January, there are conferences here at the Grand Traverse Resort, and it would certainly be tragic and an embarrassment for Grand Traverse County to host this conference but have basically eliminated the Parks and Recreation Department. So, I would just encourage you to look at other alternatives for making these cuts to the budget, making it more equitable across the various departments, and just consider how important Parks and Recreation is to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
You didn't think I sat here this long for nothing, did you?
I figured that.
I came here tonight, Glen Lyle, East Bay Township Supervisor. I came here tonight to support Sheriff's Department, but I'm just gonna give you some figures on a different angle of what Tom did. When I first heard about, you know, they talked about cutting whatever it was, seven road patrol, and, you know, there was a figure of, I don't know, 6.5% increase for the CPOs. I went down through some paperwork, and nobody has mentioned this, at least when I've been around. I guess I just asked the county board, by all means, do not cut any road patrol. And I went through the calls from January through October of 2012, and I went through it compared to this year, because that's the latest report I had. In my figuring, the total calls in Grand Traverse County went up, calls for service like 22% in one year. East Bay Township alone went from 4,567 calls in 2012 to 5,495 calls in 2013. If we eliminate any road patrol, that means that the CPOs are gonna be, somebody's gotta do the calls. And the calls, you know, when you're talking 22% increase in calls for service with the same number of officers, I don't know how they're gonna do it. So, I guess I just wanted to throw that out there. I broke it down, East Bay Township went from 17 calls a day for service to 20 calls a day for service, which, maybe it doesn't sound like a lot, we got two CPOs, they work four days a week, 10 hours a day, one of our CPOs is a training officer, and also on the dive team and has training. So, if you really look at it, these, somebody's scrambling out there. The county, if I got, you know, their numbers correct, they went from 126 calls a day for service to 155 calls a day for service. That's a lot of calls. You know, you don't think about it, but if you got, whatever you got out there, 8, 10, and I didn't go through Garfield, I mean, I figured, I knew Chuck was gonna be here, and he probably got them all, but anyhow, I just wanna throw that out, and also remember that, you know, the taxpayers in East Bay Township are paying county taxes, which does go for the Sheriff's Department, and then they're stepping up and paying a second time so that they can have two officers out there. And I think the price is well worth it, I just don't wanna keep nibbling at it until it crumbles. So, you know, I realize there's gotta be some increases, minimal is what I guess I would ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anybody else?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna, but Lauren popped.
Did you watch us on TV and then come from home?
No, I don't watch.
No, no, he's been...
He's been sitting in the back.
Eight years ago, down in the basement, I was asked how I was gonna cut $100,000 from the budget, so some things never change, huh? My name is Tim Schreiner, I'm Park, or I live at 4485 Manhattan, Washington, Traverse. The Record Eagle, and we always know how accurate they are, stated that Commissioner Maxbowor mentioned that she had seen some other counties where mergers had taken place, and it worked well. Grand Traverse County is behind Oakland County, Genesee County, and Kent County, as the fourth most successful county parks and rec department in the state. Those guys don't merge. There might be some small podunk places that can merge and make a go, but merging up here at a facility and programs and facilities that you've got, it's not gonna work. Lauren was brought up to the city after Ray Plamondon retired, and Veldgen Bike retired. I remember the city saying, we're not gonna replace them. Paula, she works at the city, she can do volleyball programs because she plays it. One of the guys over at the city garage played basketball, I can't remember his name, but they said he can run the basketball league. The residents rose all kinds of hell. The city hired Veldgen, thank God they did. Folks, you guys got a wonderful thing here. You've got a fantastic staff. Don't screw it up. Thanks.
Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, where do we wanna go from here?
Schedule our next meeting.
Okay. What dates would you like to look at?
Well, the next two Wednesdays, all day are open.
I think an all-day one would be best, by the way.
What do you guys think?
I think all day.
11:20 and 11:27. There's nothing scheduled. Wednesday, the 20th and Wednesday, the 27th, I think our Alver calendars should be clear unless we're gotten out of town.
Good Ways and Means.
That's in the evening, I mean, for a day.
All day.
One-day meeting.
Maybe we could up the time of our Ways and Means and incorporate it so we don't have to go home and come back.
You wanna have Ways and Means in the morning, and then go take a break?
No, I'm not that...
Starting at 3:00 and go through Ways and Means?
No, we're gonna need more than time than just 3:00.
Start at 1:00.
I don't know why.
What about 9:00 Saturday morning?
I'm gone.
Well, we've got, we have, we have a lot of money to find in here. It's not gonna be all that easy.
I mean...
Ain't gonna be that bad. Good guy.
You wanna start at 1:00 on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Which Wednesday?
20.
The 20.
20.
And if necessary, on the 27th at 1:00.
Well, you know, the challenge I have with the 27th is that just before our meeting, and if I had my preference, I hope we have a balanced budget by that night.
All right. Good luck. All right, let's meet at 1:00 on the 20th.
I hope that that's our goal.
Well, let's plan on the 20th and see how it goes, and...
Okay.
1:00?
1:00, Wednesday, the 20th.
Yep.
Any other discussion with the Commissioners?
Yeah, we'd oughta put a fourth floor on here.
I don't suppose anybody's got any aspirin, honestly.
I got it at home.
I'm not kidding.
Any, no, seeing nothing, we...
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, let's stick around for a while.
Since an hour. These are the times for...